I'd like to call the City Council Workshop Session with Nuasis County to order and ask Ms. Huerta to call the role, and then following Judge Canales will call the County Commissioners Court to order and call the role. So Ms. Huerta?
Mayor Joe McCombe.
Here.
Councilmember Roland Barera.
Here.
Rudy Garza.
Here.
Jhale Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Ben Molina.
Present.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Greg Smith.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Here.
City Attorney Miles Risley.
Here.
Mayor Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Judge?
Good morning, council and audience. I'd also like to call Row of the Nuasis County Commissioners Court, Commissioner John Modis.
Here.
Commissioner Carolyn Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Joe A. Gonzalez.
Commissioner Brent Chesney.
Here.
And myself, Barbara Canales, present, county judge. I do certify for the record that we also have a quorum here of our Nuasis County Commissioners Court.
All right. Thank you. The purpose of the meeting today is to get a briefing from city staff, and at this point, I'll turn it over to City Manager Peter Zanoni.
All right, good. Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, Mayor, and members of the council and Commissioners Court of Nuasis County. Good morning, and thank you for being here. Council and commissioners, we have a presentation this morning that will be given to us by several city staff members, and what we'll be providing to you is a list of items that we believe as staff we need to continue to analyze and get more information for the city council in terms of making a decision on North Beach. And as the presenters will talk to us about, several of these items will take several weeks, in some cases, several months. But the critical pieces of information that we believe the council needs in order to make a sound policy decision with respect to North Beach. One thing we know is everybody that I've talked to in my close to seven months here is supportive of redeveloping North Beach. We know that we need to do that. And I think we're also all on the same page in terms of a drainage solution to include the option of a canal. So nobody that I've talked to has said, "Don't do that." I think everybody wants to do something of those lines. What we do need, though, from a staff perspective, is the best information we can get and enough of it to make a sound policy choice, and I don't think we have that today. So the presenters today will talk to you about several critical pieces of information that we're working on to get you those points of information. That includes items that relate to this project, which has been described as a drainage project, but more recently, I've learned that it's probably better to call it a coastal project. This is on the coast, and when you're doing a coastal project, there's a lot more complexity than a drainage project. A drainage project is pretty simple, and I would submit that this project is not simple. It's a coastal project, and it has a lot of components, and we'll hear about that this morning from Mark Van Vleek. We're going to talk to you about the drainage issues on North Beach. They do not go away with just a canal. We need a drainage system as well so that people can walk to and from residences and places of employment without walking through water. We're going to talk to you about the shoreline protection. When we talk about North Beach, we, for years, for decades, have been mindful about the beach erosion issue that takes place there. Certain drainage, certain development solutions can have a significant impact on the beach, and erosion and loss of sand, and so we'll talk to you about that this morning. We want to give you an update on the eco park. We received a federal grant from the U.S. Parks and Wildlife Services to help design an eco park, and that's been a multiple year effort that's going on. That does play into the total project of North Beach, and we want to give you an update on that today. We have to talk to you about financial analysis, how we pay for whatever we do on North Beach. Needs to be a sound financial policy decision, and we're not quite there yet. There's still much analytical work to do with respect to financing, to include engaging our outside financial consultant. We do want to talk to you about permitting requirements. We've heard the time of anywhere from three-plus years to get appropriate permitting, and we want to make sure we've had the conversations with at least five state and federal agencies that have to give us a permit for certain aspects of North Beach, depending on what we do. And we'll talk to you about Ian Vacy. Actually, we'll talk to us a little bit about economic impact analysis and the question of if we build it, will they come? That's an important question. We want to make sure, as a public entity, if we spend forty, fifty, a hundred million dollars, is it likely that developers will build there? We know that this is the lowest point in the bay, and it has served as the blowout valve for any major hurricane or storm event, and that exists no matter what we do because of its low topography. It's the lowest point in the whole bay area. And so we need that question answered, which is if we, as a city, invest taxpayer money, is it likely we'll see the development that we've seen in some of these videos? And then we do need to talk about the Harbor Bridge. That's a major component. Half of the, what we have seen in the videos of the canal is now, the bridge is there, and so we have to talk about when does that bridge come down, who owns that property, do we have to buy it, how do we get access to it? We'll talk to you about that as well. And then Arlene Madrano will give us an update on the tax increment reinvestment zone. There's additional information that we recently received from the Nuasis County Appraisal District, and so we need to do an update on the values, and we'll talk to you about that. So those are some of the things we'll cover this morning. We have several presenters, all whom are in the front row. Mark Van Vleek will begin. Dan McGinn, our Planning Director, will speak. Yvette Dodd Wallace, our former floodplain administrator, has some real good information for us this morning. Arlene Madrano will talk to us about the towers itself. And then Ian Vacy will spend a little bit of time talking about economic impact. And staff that presented here, as well as other staff, to answer questions that you have this morning. This is a workshop for the council. It's a benefit for the council and the Commissioners Court. It's for the benefit of both bodies to get as many questions answered as you can so you can make sound policy decisions. So with that, Mayor and Judge Canales, we're going to have Mark Van Vleek begin our presentation.
Mayor and Manager Zanoni, just because I was handed this, and I want to make sure that I'm accurate here, I didn't note some of the details that we need for our clerk. We posted in a certain way.
Okay.
So with your permission, they're formalities, ministerial, but they're important. That is, today is Tuesday, December 3, 2019, and we're located in the City Council Chambers here at City Hall in Corpus Christi. I did certify that a quorum was present, but Mayor, we posted public comment, so I need to ask, I don't think you all, according to Court Manager Tyner Little, you all posted public comment, but we did, so I need to allow for a public comment, period.
Something not on the agenda.
On something not on the agenda. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay.
I have nobody's time.
Okay. Okay, so on the agenda items, we'll just allow it at the time that, if you don't mind, just be sure and call for it after each presenter. Okay?
Yeah, Judge Canales, I would recommend that all the presenters present, because it's really a seamless presentation, and then if you don't mind, I would have citizen comment after all presenters?
Yeah, and it's really, it's me. So I want to make sure that I get a chance to comment and ask my commissioners to have an opportunity to comment as well. So I just, and of course, anybody else that signs up, but...
Right. This is for the benefit of you as much as for the city council.
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mark Van Vleek, Assistant Sea Manager, and I'm going to repeat what the sea managers have said, as those that will be joining me today. Dan McGinn will be next, and he will be discussing the eco park on North Beach. Yvette Dodd will be discussing floodplain management, and then Arlene Madrano, who will be discussing the update on related to the property values of North Beach, which we've become aware of. And then finally, Ian Vacy, who will be discussing economic impacts. Over the last, I believe it's maybe week, the sea manager and I and other members of staff, we've met with Deidra Williams of the Conrad Blucher Institute, and we've met with Jim Shiner, formerly of Shiner Mosley, and then formerly of HDR, and I think he's retired now, except he's got his own business. He's retired from HDR, but he has his own business. We've met with each of them for about a little over an hour, I believe, and during that time, they've consistently said that this is more than a simple drainage project. It's a complicated project that needs to ensure that coastal processes are addressed. Because each of these meetings were over an hour, as part of the due diligence process, we would recommend that you receive briefings on the questions that they would like to see addressed. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'll go through a few that they have asked. One that they consistently asked is, what are the goals that we're trying to achieve on North Beach? Is it just drainage? Is it economic development? Is it reducing the velocity zone? What are all the things, and what are our goals, so that we know when we have a project or projects that achieve those goals? Then, once we've identified what those goals are, we can do identifying alternatives that address each of the goals, then analyze the alternatives to determine which ones perform best through a coastal process, through coastal engineering, modeling, bathymetric modeling, showing the flow of essentially the waters through the canal, flow of water around or through breakwater, if breakwaters are built, and islands. Those are some of the things that they would like to see analyzed, and that would be part of the alternatives analysis. A very short list of some of the specific questions is, where is the channel to the bay going to be located? I think in most of the pictures that we've seen, it goes, cuts through the center of the beach, but as we've had discussions, I think I've heard discussions that it might go all the way through the northern end of the peninsula. I've seen where there's a discussion that it might be also or separately just south of the Lexington. Each of those needs to be modeled in a separate way and know their impacts. The key is to ensure the water quality, so that the water is moved in and out so that it doesn't become stagnant. What are the long-term maintenance needs of the canal? Once again, how are the movements of the sand along the beach and the need for renourishment going to be addressed, particularly if you do a channel directly through the beach? Because what they described to us was essentially, you've now created two beaches that may need renourishment. One just before where the cut is, and then one right after the cut. And right now, GLO generally funds, and what they do is essentially, they haul, load it on trucks, and haul it from the north end to the south end. That would be difficult to do if there's a cut directly through. How will we ensure that we maintain a high water quality between both the breakwaters and within the canal? We don't want the water within the canal to become stagnant, and I don't think we want the area between the breakwaters and the beach to turn into a lagoon. And what they've described is if you don't do this right, that's a very possible result. So that comes back to what are the goals that we're trying to achieve with the various projects? And then how ultimately do you want to address rising sea levels and tidal flooding? Mr. Urban, there he is, is updating the assumptions of his report related to options one and two. They will be based on conveying the water associated with a 25-year storm rather than a 100-year storm. The cost estimates associated with those options will be reduced considerably. I'm working from memory here, but I believe the cost for option one may be reduced by as much as 50%, somewhere in that neighborhood, give or take. But we expect these updates to be finalized in the next few weeks. We will expand the research to identify how other communities experience similar problems are addressed, as we continue also. Before progressing too far, we would recommend a comprehensive peer review process be kind of instituted, similar to what was utilized for Packery Channel. I wasn't here when that occurred, but in the discussions with Deidra and Mr. Shiner, they described a process that was very intense in making sure that we get it right as we move forward. And that was through a peer review process so that the questions were addressed by the scientists and engineers to each other, as well as the community. Additionally, we need to, at a minimum, conduct a geotechnical review of the area to include soil borings and materials testing. We need to identify what material is there and whether it is reusable. This was a formal railway line, so we want to determine what materials they took out, what materials they left, what they may have left behind in their haul routes, so we want to at least look at that. We talked about this previously. We haven't done a great deal of detailed analysis on raising of the streets. We need to hire a consultant and work with the businesses and residents of North Beach to determine what streets need to be raised, by how much, and prioritize the work. There's no way that I can see that we can do all the work at the same time. Similar to Laguna Shores, which I think was Bond 2000, did the first section, and we're just doing the last section in Bond 2016, 18. So over the last 18 years, Laguna Shores, which was experiencing a very similar tidal flooding problem, in other words, sunshine, it would be under the water because of high tides, and it's taken us essentially 18 years through various phases to raise just that one road. So we need to work with the community of North Beach to determine which roads need to be raised first and how much to address those issues. In a report produced by McDonald, and restated again by Mr. Shiner, that additional analysis related to the proposed dimensions of the canal and jetties needs to be performed to essentially address those issues in there, make sure that the water quality are addressed, minimize sedimentation, which relates again to the maintenance schedule, the frequency, and the monitoring that we would want to do, determine where the project, the canal, is in relation to all the city's right-of-ways. If you're going through the north end or the south end, the city may not own all of those properties, and we may need to acquire properties. This work is not currently under McDonald's contracts. We could amend their contract to add that work, or we could go with a different consultant to do the modeling and look at these items, but it was recommended that we had done, and it's not in their current contract. Additionally, I don't think it's news that the bridge may be a little bit behind. I'm not sure any of us know exactly how far and what the schedule is going forward. We really need to sit down with them and their contractor, text out their contractor, and determine the schedule. The routing of traffic due to the construction of North Beach is confusing at best right now. If we add additional construction up there, I think it needs to be well-coordinated and thought out so that we don't lose people that are trying to get to the Lexington completely. This is a separate project, okay, from the canal, but depending on how you do the canal and where the channel is cut, whether it's cut through the beach, if it's cut through the beach, it is affected by the breakwaters. If it doesn't go directly through the beach, it goes through one of the ends, it's not as likely to be as affected by the breakwaters. But this is currently under contract, and notice that if we were to add additional work to their contract, it could be additional amounts, and dates may change. We have not sat down with them, so I don't know whether that is a certainty, but that is a possibility. And please note on this that their preliminary design work is expected to be done in June of 2020. We need to determine the permitting process that we will entail. This is not an exhaustive list of agencies that would review any permits, but it is a start. The Corps of Engineers normally would take the lead on the consultation with the other agencies and take that lead. Normally, the Corps would want to know everything that you're planning to do in an area of land and consider all the work as part of the permit process. Under the National Environmental Policy Act, they're required to look at the cumulative impacts, not one project at a time, so they would want to do that. Okay? Could multiple contracts over multiple years, but they're required to consider them all. The Corps is not likely to let each of the projects or phases be separate instruments, but obviously, we would talk to them. It would be part of our discussions to see if we could separate them and under what circumstances they could be separated. That would be part of the ongoing dialogue that you normally do with the Corps of Engineers on these type of projects. And I will now turn it over to Dan McGinn.
Good morning. Daniel McGinn, Director of the Planning Department. The proposed eco park on North Beach is approximately 30 acres at the north end of North Beach, highlighted here on the slide. A park, an eco park, will typically contain items, wetlands, trail systems, you know, have information on the various wildlife that could be found in that area, observation decks, interpretive signage where folks can kind of walk through the park, read about the wildlife and different species of plant that would be in place there. The OSA Wetlands Park is a good example of what we have here locally in our community. The concept of an eco park is not new for North Beach. In both the 2011 and 2018 planning work, the north end was identified to further develop. We do have amenities that are there now, with some playgrounds, some wetland areas. In fact, we've worked with the Harbor Bridge project to create some additional wetlands in this area. There's some observation decks, but these plans really wanted to see the area develop out fully with an attractive park for the community and tourists that would be drawn in. Following up on an implementation strategy from our planning work, Karen Costanzo, in our planning department, was successful in securing a grant for technical assistance with the National Park Service at an approximate value of probably $200,000 to $300,000. So we've been working with them over the last year. Last winter, we formed a steering committee of stakeholders within the North Beach area. We had visioning workshops with that community back in May of this year. We had local experts from the various agencies, GLO, TCQ, the university. We had kind of the leading experts in this region come in and talk about the projects and things they would like to see in this area. And then last week, two weeks ago now, we had a community design workshop where those same experts were in with an edition of landscape architects that came in with the National Park Service and also the Houston Landscape Architect Association. They had some folks come in as well and assist us with the design. Next steps for this project will be to gather feedback on the concepts that were developed last week, and that we will have a survey that will be available to the public now. We'll be posting that and getting additional feedback over the coming weeks, and then we would like to come back to the council with one single concept that has elements of the three concepts that were discussed last week. And these were the three designs, and moving kind of from left to right, you have maybe the more developed park system, and then a kind of a medium kind of development, and then a less kind of tactical intervention style park on the immediate right. We just, early feedback, it kind of was leading us to probably the design of Concept Two. We heard a lot of folks were very interested in interpretive signage, boardwalks, accessible design is important, we heard. So all that feedback will be taken into account, and we'll come back with one final design for council to look at probably in the February timeframe. That concludes my portion.
Good morning. Yvette Dodd Wallace. I'm just going to say Development Services because I'm not really sure of the title today. What I have here for you today, I'm sorry, I clicked twice, the map that you see above indicates the velocity zone on North Beach. The velocity zone is a zone dictated by FEMA that has the potential of being inundated by storm surge in a coastal event. And storm surge is, of course, going to be not just rising water, but actual wave action coming into the area, whereas other zones that we regulate are just rising water. There are different base flood elevations in every flood zone that's dictated by FEMA. On North Beach, currently, we have two distinct base flood elevations for the velocity zone. You have a 15-foot, which is indicated in yellow, and that's going to be seaward, and then you have some landward buffer behind it that's a 13-foot base flood elevation. The base flood elevation dictates the potential height of a storm surge in the event of a coastal event above mean sea level. In a velocity zone, it has some of the most stringent development requirements that we have. So currently, in a velocity zone, new construction must have the habitable space elevated on pilings or columns with the bottom of the lowest horizontal member at or above the base flood elevation requirement, plus an additional foot. And the additional foot was adopted by the City of Corpus Christi April 16, 2019. Areas that are below the first habitable floor can be used or must only be used for parking access and storage. So it can't be a habitable space, no garage apartments, no man caves, but you can have a garage. It can be enclosed, as long as it's done so with non-supporting breakaway walls, and those are engineered walls or simple lattice or slats that you can see up and down North Beach. When we've had some of the discussions for North Beach and looked at some of the proposed plans, the discussion was to elevate North Beach, or elevate portions of North Beach. This gets a little tricky in a velocity zone. The difference between elevating for just, you know, making your lot a smooth surface versus bringing in fill to elevate the entire North Beach or pads within North Beach. 44 CFR 60.3 E6, which is what we operate under, a portion of 44 CFR that we operate under, prohibits the use of fill for structural support of buildings within velocity zones, so that's anything that starts with a V. In speaking with FEMA and their coastal engineers, they have determined that a placement of fill up to two feet under or around elevated structures can be assumed to be acceptable without an engineering analysis or certificate for drainage purposes. Again, that's to make your lot adequate for development. The use of non-structural fill for lot drainage, parking lots, and walkways is allowed, so you can elevate a pad site for a walkway or a parking lot. The problem that we have there is it's a tricky number, again, because the fill that you bring in must not divert floodwaters or deflect waves in such a way that could increase damage to adjacent or surrounding properties. So that's something that would have to be looked at on a site-by-site basis and look at the development around it and the engineering that goes along with it. The other component that we have to that is if, say, for instance, you bring in three foot of fill for a parking lot, and five years later, you determine you would like to put a structure on that parking lot, then whenever we're looking at the development permit, we have to subtract that three foot of fill as if it was not there. So your piling depth could be deeper than what it would be if you weren't to elevate the lot. the lot. Last week, we had a phone call with FEMA Region 6, specifically Larry Vois, who's the Risk Analysis Branch, in the Risk Analysis Branch, and he had Amanda Oy with AECOM, and she's a coastal mapper that looks at revisions to coastal areas. We had this discussion with city staff and representative from the North Beach Task Force, and we sent them over the reports that we had so far, so they can look at it and see what the recommendations were. They had some concerns. Again, elevating lots with fill greater than lot grading would not be allowed unless the area was moved out of the velocity zone. Moving out of the velocity zone's a hard feat, right? So, I know that we're looking at breakwaters. So, yes, they're saying breakwaters could potentially reduce the velocity zone, but we're not going to eliminate it with breakwaters. We can't overbuild those to eliminate the velocity zone. The velocity zone's 15 feet, that's pretty substantial. To reduce the velocity zone to an A, what they recommended was doing a seawall or a bulkhead for North Beach. Something similar to the seawall at White Cap, the seawall downtown at McGee Beach, where you have a pathway down to the beach, and it protects. And so, there's some additional pictures here of the one at White Cap. And White Cap, I'm bringing up because it's very important. So, when the seawall was constructed, it actually removed all of the properties that are seaward from the seawall, so behind the seawall, out of the velocity zone, and almost entirely out of Zone A. So, most of that is in an area that has no development regulations because it's protected by the seawall. So, that was one of their concerns, is if you put up a seawall, then you can do improvements that you're wanting to do because you're protecting that shoreline. If we go in and we add fill now, we elevate roadways, we do things like that. If we have a surge event, and we have had surge events on North Beach, but if we have a surge event, it's going to go pull all of that sand and take it back to the bay, and we're starting all over from scratch. So, that's why they're recommending that if we wanted to move forward with protecting North Beach successfully, that it would take something substantial such as a seawall or bulkhead. A few additional concerns that they had, we talked about elevating lots with fill greater than two foot. It could also pose a risk to the foundation in the event of storm surge. When they put up that structure, there's an engineer that signs and seals the foundation at whatever the lot was at the day of development. If we go add fill around that foundation, we're putting increased load, or increased pressure on the pilings that were already designed for a certain wave action and then certain depth. So, most of them are about 20 feet below grade. They also made mention that the studies that have been done thus far needed to take into account storm surge. When we're looking at the area, studies currently or any future studies, we always need to look at storm surge and take that into consideration because it's not the if, it's when, so we should be building for worst case. The canal could also potentially provide conveyance for coastal floodwaters to propagate further inland, which could actually increase your velocity zone. So, we don't, we want to make sure that we're not increasing the velocity zone because we're getting very close to Highway 181, which is the Harbor Bridge project. The velocity buffer there is relatively close in certain areas. They also had very high concerns about elevating portions of North Beach because we have so many existing slab-on-grade structures. We have some condos, some hotels, we have some single-family residential structures, and what does that do to them? If we build up around them, we're moting them in basically, and we would be inundating them, so that's also something we have to take into consideration when we're looking at lot by lot. It has to be done lot by lot, we can't do it as a blanket. Also, any of the improvements that we do in that area would take a letter of map revision, and that is issued by FEMA, and it's required to amend the flood insurance rate map, and that's also a requirement of 44 CFR that we also operate under, so that would have to be done, and it is a lengthy process. We've gone through a few of them, substantial ones in the past few years, none in the velocity zone, and those have taken years to complete. It's not a six-month process, it's timely. There have been successful, coming from FEMA, there has been successful removals of the VE zone with a letter of map revision if you do an improvement that would reduce the velocity zone. So, those are all the comments that we had from FEMA thus far, and of course, we'll keep them in the loop as we go through the process and get their guidance on any potential that we have moving forward. And next up is Arlie Madrono.
Good morning. Arlie Madrono, Business Liaison. So, today I have some updates on property values within the TERS number four at North Beach. We'll be coming to, first to the TERS four board, and then to city council in December to amend the ordinance and project and financing plan. Due to the way that some of these properties are parsed by individual interests, the NCAD mapping system doesn't detect condominiums. So, if you do a website search on NCAD, you'll see that these actually come up with no geographic ID and say null for these parcels. So, these are the, these are five of the condo buildings that, which values were left off of the initial total valuation within the TERS. This is a breakdown. We have the Breakers, Villa del Sol, Beach Place condo, Beachcomber cottages, Town Homes, Las Barisas condo, and then there were some other properties that include submerged land, county properties, properties within the ETJ, which were non-taxable. So, the total value is about $44 million. So, the changes to the base value, this is actually going to reflect an increase of two, about $280,000 to the city's general fund every year, and an increase of $137,000 to the county's base value. So, that's that base value that continues to go into each entity's general fund for the duration of the TERS. It's anything above that that goes into the increment. So, the change to the increment, because we have an additional $44 million, that's going to increase our increment about 2.5 million over the 20 years, which comes out to about $126,000 per year. And I will introduce Ian Vasey, CEO of the EDC.
Good morning, Mayor, Council members, Judge Commissioners. For the record, Ian Vasey with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. Got with me Mr. Culbertson, our Chief Operating Officer and Financial Wizard. We've taken a look at the economic impact study. We were asked to take a look at that, which was prepared for the developer by Mr. Illem. One of the things we tried to do was look at the modeling of this and understand what the risk profile and the risk management would be. It's an impressive study by Mr. Illem, by the way. We went out and we did some analysis ourselves, and we looked at other models where we could follow this. And we also retained Capital Market Research, which is probably the best consultant in the state of Texas, recommended by Texas Economic Development Council. And one of the things that we kind of looked at, and we've heard from developers, that San Antonio River Walk is mentioned as a possible like project. But, you know, when we looked at it, and our consultant looked at it, we really found that it's a very dissimilar project. It's a, it took 90 years to develop where it's at, it's in seventh largest city in America, it's not on the coast. So, it's a little bit of a, it's an unusual thing to be able to draw that parallel. Now, we looked at, we looked at others, we looked for others where we could identify a link between if you build this infrastructure, and it's a large amount of infrastructure, and will it result in increase in land values, vertical development? And we just couldn't find those links. I mean, this is the ultimate case of if you build it, will they come? And that's the question we were trying to answer. Now, the things that we do know would come, because that's committed by Mr. Frazier, would be the, would be his hotel and apartment project. So, that's going to generate a net benefit after incentives to the city of about $2 million in net present value over 20 years. Now, there's an additional $12 million in other places that it goes to public agencies such as the school district getting $1.8 million, other districts, the hospital district, the RTA Del Mar getting $3.2 million, and the TERS receiving $6.9. So, that would go into the TERS fund to be used essentially to pay back some of the infrastructure. Now, I was lying awake last night thinking about this. You know, this comes down to if you, if the engineers are willing to say, yeah, this canal, if you build it, the ditch, if you will, if you build it, will it pay for itself? Well, it would protect enough other properties in additional value, sure. And if you could say with any certainty that, yeah, let's build the canal in the ditch, let's do this. But the engineers, I don't think are at that point where they're able to say, yeah, this is the solution, this is the comprehensive solution. Now, when we address things for the city and the county, we look at the city and county goals, do you have to have a return on investment? Well, as a best practice, you generally do, and the city has adopted a policy to that effect. But you can also take into account other public good. Does it solve a drainage problem within the wider area? Does it do things for the community and tourism and other things in our residents that you don't necessarily have to see the return on investment, like a private sector would have to get a return on investment? So, you could set aside the economic impact and say that the general public good is that. The other thing that we would be recommending is limits on expenditures. So, this is the proverbial, you know, if you hit it, if you go into it, it's the old Tar Baby thing from, you know, the Brer Rabbit stories, where he hit the thing and then he couldn't escape, so he hit it with his right paw, and then he gets, and you can't escape these things. So, once you're in, you're in. So, our recommendation would be to do some kind of structure and protections for the public agencies on their spendings. Anyway, when we do typical agreements on any kind of development, a typical agreement is a developer commits to do something, whatever that is. We run the economic impact analysis, we know what it is, we've got commitments, timeframes, milestones, and things like that. And then, and then there's a spend or a something required from the public agencies, the cities, the counties. It could be roads, it could be, in this case, a canal, could be something. And then you get the revenue that comes out of the development, and it pays for those infrastructure, so it's not carried on the backs of the other folks. And I just kind of want to talk about timeframe as well. I was talking to the developer about this a couple of weeks ago, sat down with him and said, look, we just don't necessarily see it there, we're just not there yet from being able to make a recommendation. And the response was, well, if this was the Cowboys' practice facility, you know, you guys would be jumping all over. And I want to be very clear, I've been involved in two major league sports stadium development, the Arizona Cardinals, Phoenix Coyotes, also been involved in the, in spring training facilities for the White Sox and the Dodgers. Major league facilities, we would always have those agreements in place, very solid agreements and commitments from developers. You know, probably 90 days, upwards of 90 days from when we would be bringing things to council. So, rushing into a decision on something with an open-ended checkbook, as a best practice, that's something that you probably wouldn't necessarily do. So, I'm saying at this point, might be a great project, looking, great-looking plan, great-looking vision, but we have to have those protection mechanisms before we can make some more definitive recommendations. And that was what was the recommendation from Capital Market Strategies, which is our consultant as well. So, thank you for your time, and I'm sure there'll be questions afterwards.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes the staff presenters from this morning. And just to kind of recap, while you did hear a lot of concerns from the staff, I want to point out that we have five different departments and agencies that have been working pretty diligently on this project, so at least the six months, six, seven months that I've been here. So, we have a dedicated team working. While we hear a lot of concerns, I think what we do have is people committed to wanting to improve North Beach and wanting to come up with a solution. I want to make that clear. There's nobody saying, let's not do this. Even the staff is saying, let's do it. But what you could hear from them this morning is there's still a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of work in progress, even Chip Urban's study is still not finalized. We have questions from FEMA that have to be answered. We have design changes that are going on right now with the canal from what we've seen in the video. So, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of work in progress, there's a lot of work to be done, and that's what we're recommending that we continue to pursue, and we bring back to council in a methodical way and in a timely way some of these component pieces so that you'll have enough information to progress forward. So, again, the point of this workshop this morning is to benefit the council and the Nuasis County Commissioners, and so at this point, we're going to turn it back over to
Mayor, can you turn your microphone on, please? Thank you.
Since we didn't make provision for public comment, and we can discuss it without the public comment, but if you had want to open it up for public comment on the Commissioner's side, that's fine.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we'll just make comments, you know, I don't know if it's necessary it has to be on public comment, but just that there is an opportunity for comment. And so, I'd ask Commissioner Modest, do you have any comment at this point or any questions? I'd rather workshop not be so formal, it seems like it's better if we informally ask questions of the presenters, but I think there's some of us that actually made just some general comments. You don't have to, Commissioner, I just wanted to move from left to right.
No, not at this point. I mean, to me, it's more gathering information, and I will just want to share, reiterate what I mentioned during our first joint meeting to remind us and point us, I think, in a direction that we should go, is that I do appreciate the cooperation between our mayor, council, and city management and staff from the City of Corpus Christi for allowing us in this process. It's historic of what we're doing in these joint meetings, and, you know, we have a big issue that we will be dealing with hopefully soon with the old courthouse, and I think that this is the same approach that we should have moving forward that, since y'all, hopefully, if we do get success, would be bringing in type A money to the process. So, I just, I do, I do have some questions, and I want to hear more discussion before maybe I share later on, but just to say that I think this is the right direction that we should be taking when we have big projects that impact not only the City of Corpus Christi, but the county as a whole, and so I do appreciate this process and this cooperation we have. Thank you.
Commissioner Vaughn.
I have some written comments. I'd like to thank the City of Corpus Christi for inviting Nuasis County to the joint workshop today. As we continue working together on this effort and hopefully other efforts in the future, we communicate to the people we serve that we are focused on making things happen in Nuasis County and the City of Corpus Christi. When I looked at the agenda for today, I noticed quite a few presentations that will be important as the city moves forward, helping address the drainage issues that have plagued the taxpayers in North Beach for decades. I believe the single most important item that we can focus on is whether or not the city council wants to do something that sparks development, sparks development in North Beach, such as the canal. Clearly written in Mr. Frazier's letter from October the 16th, he asked the city to put the TERS in place and make a city commitment to the North Beach canal system. We've been talking about this for a couple of years and the engineering for months. At some point, someone has to call the question as to whether we are going to take the necessary steps and make the necessary commitments such that development will happen. So, while the presentations today were important part, ultimately, cities and developers know how to build canals. Canals are a proven method to address drainage issues. We have to remember the most important thing we're doing here is addressing the drainage issue on behalf of the citizens and property owners of North Beach, which is why, apart from the details, the time is now to commit to the canal or not. Here's the most important thing anyone can say to the city council members. Do you want to be known as a city council member that led a $40 million hotel, and ultimately, hundreds of millions of private dollar investments in North Beach slipped through your fingers? Do you want to be known as a city council member who strands the Texas State Aquarium and US Lexington? Do you want to be known as a city council member who does nothing to create environmental habitat at the same time as our area is industrializing? Lynn Frazier and Jeff Blackard have emailed you an ordinance that achieves what thousands of people in our city and county support have written and committed to their support, is to a canal. The time is now to make a decision. You have a meeting on December the 10th. Your decision for the canal will define your legacy as council members. Remember, you work for the citizens, it's their money, it's not yours. 2,000 signatures so far have been signed. We know this won't be easy, but that shouldn't stop us from doing it. San Antonio did it. Well, you know, you say that people have committed to help North Beach, but behind the scenes, we have a city manager that is steering Lynn Frazier to other areas in the city. So, one site should not be favored over another. We've neglected North Beach for decades, and it's time for us, for you guys, to make a change and put North Beach at the front of the line. You do things at the island, you do things in other areas. Why would you try and steer him someplace else? There's eight opportunity zones in the city, that's not what he wants, he wants to do in North Beach. He has committed his career, his life, to doing North Beach. It's just very frustrating that this is going on. And I would just say this because I think we need to clarify, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Sinoni did due diligence on Blackard. His reputation has been just flawed, they've been trying to discredit him. In the last few weeks, he's been discredited, the news is asking questions, someone has, I'm not accusing you, but someone has had to have said something. There was a great letter from McKinney, from the mayor there, that talked about Jeff Blackard. That should be shared because it shows what a great developer he is. One of my big concerns is they had a meeting last night, and in that meeting, it was said, Mayor, and Mr. Sinoni, I think you backed him up, that Jeff Blackard said the canal and the breakwaters would cost $42 million. That is not true. I said in that meeting, I have a transcript for the meeting, I have a tape if you want to play it. This has got to stop. You should always tell the truth. That is a flat-out lie. That did not happen, and I don't want to see a developer come to the city and be discredited like this. It's time for us to say yes and quit saying no, 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 because people are going to quit coming here and trying to get us to do anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Chesney.
A woman's prerogative.
Absolutely, you're the judge. This has been a frustrating process to encounter. Quite honestly, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and this is a difficult thing to address because normally, I wouldn't address issues that relate so much to the city, but issues that relate so much to the city, but, but for the fact that we were invited to be here, and that sometimes can be a good thing and a bad thing, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. But I, I have to, as I listen to this presentation, the comment that I would make is, actions speak louder than words. I hear the words coming out of the mouths of staff that we want to do this, but yet the actions don't seem to reflect that. This process has been going on now, I, I don't even remember how long this has been going on, and yet I hear Ian Vasey, with all due respect, say, rushing in. If, if anyone thinks this process has been rushed, then they're not paying attention, excuse me, to the process. It's frustrating, because the county doesn't have as big a role as the city does, but the county has voted a long time ago unanimously, several times, to move forward with this tours, and we've done the, all we can do, in the sense that if there were more that we could do, I would, I would be happy to entertain that. So if there are some things that the city thinks the county should be doing that we're not, or that the county can do to help move this along, because this, in my opinion, needs to be moved along. I was an at-large member of the city council for three and a half terms. I've watched those people on North Beach struggle to improve themselves. They are one hundred percent behind this. They have come forward and consistently said, we want this, we want this, and yet, and I take a role, because I was on the city council, we have not paid attention to North Beach in the manner in which we should. There is no reason that that place should not be developing. This needs to be decided in a manner that is appropriate, but it's in the sense that if anyone thinks this is rushing in, I would say that is a, sorry, Ian, that's a joke of a statement, because this has been going on and on and on. I do think Mr. Zanoni has done an outstanding job, I think y'all made a great pick in bringing him in. He came into this process when it had already been going on, what, a year and a half? And so he's been trying to, you know, I think, do everything he can to push the staff and move the staff, but I, I don't feel like the actions have reflected the words in this community. Again, I wouldn't be weighing in on this, I wasn't invited to be here, because I'm very uncomfortable in getting involved in your business, but I was invited to be here, I was invited to make comments, you probably won't invite me back, and that's okay too, I understand. But I'm confused, when did all these meetings with engineers happen? Why haven't they happened a year and a half ago? Why are we just getting all this information? Why is this coming out now and not being worked on two years ago when this first came up? When was the initial presentation on this, two years ago? When did Mr. Blackard come forward? Can someone tell me that?
It started in April. The task force started in April.
Two years ago, and we're just now getting to the point where we're, we're saying, hey, gosh, we don't know if we can do this?
Twenty nineteen.
When was it?
April twenty nineteen.
That's not when Mr. Blackard first made the presentation?
That's when the North Beach task.
When the task force was formed, was it?
No, what I'm saying, when was this first submitted to the city?
Well, the task force, we started then, so it's been, April.
Yeah, April twenty nineteen was when the task force, that was. I know when the task force was formed, but when was the original idea?
It was two years ago.
Pardon me?
It was two years ago.
The idea was performed to, about two years ago, that's why, I don't know when the task force, I'm not talking about the task force, I'm, I don't.
We had a study done by Gateway, so when Nelda was here.
Right, so I, I just, I don't, I don't think there's any rushing that's going on. I do think there are some really tough decisions, because Mr. Kramer does have to, excuse me, Mr. Fraser does have to make his decisions on his financial impact, and that's a, that's a, that's just, that's a hard thing to do, I get it, but I just, I, I, I just hope that the city will look at this hard and, and, and do what I think the people of North Beach wants and, and the majority of this, this city wants. I think it's a positive project, I think it's an opportunity to leave a legacy on North Beach like I wish I would have had. And again, I'll, I'll take responsibility for some of the things that North Beach hasn't been able to accomplish, because I was on the city council too, and I hate that I have to look back and say, could there have been something I could have done differently while I was sitting there? This seems to be a huge opportunity to do something now and to do it in a manner that's positive and proactive. So again, I, I don't mean to be in any way accusing, because I do think Mr. Zanoni has come in and taken the bull by the horns, but I do think there is a way to do this, and I think it should be moved faster and quicker. And if there's something, again, that the county needs to be able to do in this, please let us know, because we will happily get involved, and I, I just don't know what that is. So, thank you.
I'm a little bit under the weather, so pardon the deep voice here. Boy, have I thought all night about whether it would be better to write something down or just speak from my head and from my heart. I don't even know where to begin, because I don't think I've ever been involved in a presentation at the county in the last eleven months where I've been more depressed by what a staff would come to present to me. That's not to say that the earnestness of the reporting was not there, it certainly was. I just believe that there wasn't any foundation, no predicate. I kept turning my pages, wondering where Larry, FEMA Larry's report is. I kept looking for anything that would give me a predicate for the negativism that I've just heard. I really didn't think I was going to even open like this, but I never imagined I would hear presentation after presentation. And for me, the coup de grace, even though I spoke to Ian briefly before I sat down, was that there was no direct link between infrastructure and economic development. I think that's kind of where, as they say, you lost me. There's always a direct link between infrastructure and economic development, and if you need, and if somebody from Capital Market Research wants to come and say otherwise, I don't care if you think he's the best, that absolutely is a, is a statement that, in my mind, really discredits him. Let me back up. Why did we come? Why did we even start this whole process? Well, for one thing, I really like you guys. Genuinely, I do. I like working with you. I like, I enjoy the idea that for the first time in a long time, the city and the county just gets in the same room. I think that ought to be truly applauded by all of us. So let me not miss the boat while I clear my head from everything that I've just heard that was negative and start off with something positive, which is that the reason we're all here is because we care about our community. It's why you campaigned hard, it's why you sit there, it's why you do all the things that you do. And I also believe that staff cares about this community, and when they're given a task, I believe they try to do their very best with the information and the directive that's given. So with that as a foundation, let me say that the first thing I did last night was think about the issue, and I don't think that reframing it, talking about it being a coastal resiliency project, changes anything. It's a water issue, it's drainage, and you can enjoy, if it makes you feel better, to call it something like a coastal resiliency project, but at the end of the day, when it rains, it floods, period. At the end of the day, when you have high tide, it floods, period. You have a drainage issue, and you also have a coastal environment, Gulf of Mexico feeding into our Corpus Christi Bay, you have a development there that needs our help. And we're here because Nuasis County has taken a bold step to say, we will give up a hundred percent, something you guys didn't even do. Our ad valorem, for a period of years, in order to create the economic incentive, the tools that are needed, we, we have now extended the invitation by contract with anybody who seeks to come and develop in that area. So the invitation is there. The invitation to, is a coveted one, it's one that communities don't take lightly. We've only done it a few times in our own history. It's one that you all didn't take lightly, because it took so long to get that accomplished, but we did it. And I like to think we did that together. But an invitation to come to somebody's house to eat without any food on the table is a hollow invitation, and the food is the infrastructure, and the infrastructure is needed to address this drainage problem. And the fact that we are on the coast does create a complexity, but I promise you, it's not a complexity that hasn't existed before. Now, for those of you that kind of know me more personally, you know that I love history, and history does repeat itself. It repeats itself so often, it hurts. Now, throughout the time of history, every civilization that I've ever read about in the world has dealt with drainage. And guess what? They've dealt with it successfully. But to remind myself, I decided to enjoy myself this morning, early in the wee hours of the morning, and remind myself how long ago it was, from three thousand B.C., okay? They've been working on flood mitigation and drainage. This is not a unique problem. Engineers can solve this problem. They have already told us that they can solve this problem. Do you need more work? Yes. Do you need to get a design team going? Yes. If you frame it in such a way that you repeat the words, we're going to cut through the beach, we're going to cut through the beach, we're going to cut through the beach, we have a velocity zone, you know, we have a breakwater issue, we're going to put, we're going to need a seawall, we're going to need a bulkhead. Nobody really attacked the break, the barrier islands or the, the breakwater islands today, that was an interesting thought, but in general, you have not really given the basic premise any consideration, which is that if you do nothing, nothing will happen. But while you do nothing, or while we do nothing, you will have an increase in sea level, you will have a possible tidal fluctuation every two, three years, you will not be able to have the development that we all need to see our economy grow here. And this eco park? What are you doing it for? Why would you invest in an eco park when you have a drainage problem? Boy, that was the positive note. I, Dan, you get the award today, because you were the only project that had a positive outcome. A park in a location where there's no positive drainage. I mean, I am, I am concerned that we are missing the forest through the trees. I do not doubt whatsoever that in the past six months, Manager Zanoni has given a tremendous amount of time, energy, and resource, including staff's time, energy, and resource to this project. But what Mayor Zanoni, what, what Manager Zanoni doesn't know, although he has heard, is that for most of us, and I'm looking around, almost every one of us I kind of know has lived here their whole lives, just like most of us here have. How many times will we watch projects go by? How many times? This history repeating itself? It's happening right now. It's happening right now, and it, and it makes me leave my comfort zone, but I have to tell you, I don't think that the county is here just because we were invited. We're here because we have a stakehold. Those waters are submerged lands in Nuasis County taxing jurisdiction. Now, only Tammy Embry was present yesterday in Aransas County, in Rockport, Texas, when I filled out a card to reiterate the county's position in looking at regional solutions for coastal resiliency at the General Land Office's mitigation hearing. As of yesterday, they gave us a little handout, that there is over one billion dollars in Hurricane Harvey state mitigation competition funds, over one hundred million dollars in coastal resiliency programs, over fifty million in resiliency community programs. Those are the three that I have starred, and there are others in the four billion-dollar pot. But it's fascinating to me that not one member of staff discussed the opportunity through HUD, through CDBG funds, that was not only discussed in Rockport, but was discussed here in Corpus Christi a month ago, have to bring to this project or to our coastline for drainage. Nobody. But Larry from FEMA stole the show, didn't he? Because he's got a lot of things to say, Larry. I mean, I'd like to go back to Larry's. I would love to have him on cross-examination, because Larry found ten reasons that he has concerns. But he does say that the breakwaters could potentially reduce the velocity zone, but not eliminate it. Oh, thank you, Larry. I mean, we understand that there was, there's no way to zero out Mother Nature. But what nobody has talked about are the opportunities that are available to create a living infrastructure that would break the velocity zone. I didn't hear one mention of that. This isn't a workshop, this is an indictment. I know what workshops look like, I know what they feel like. The only thing I agree with, Commissioner Chesney, is I don't know why we're here, is because it appears that you are getting a feel from staff that this is a project that's not ripe. That's very clear to me. This project is overdone, it's so cooked. You have a developer that's local, who brings dollars to your table on an invitation that we have all agreed unanimously through the tours, that is open, but you give him nothing to work with from infrastructure if you do not address the drainage issue. That is what I know all communities, all civilizations that have put themselves by water have had to deal with. None of this is new. Living infrastructures are done all over the world. You need to make an investment decision at, at the end of the day, just like we had to make an investment decision on tours. We cannot be a part of that, because it is city property, and we understand that. But we're all in this together, because your ad valorem is our ad valorem. And we cannot see economic prosperity if we keep pushing developers aside. It just isn't going to happen. Now, I'm sorry, it's been only six months since your city manager got here. If he had gotten here a year ago, well, maybe we would have a different story. He would have had the time that he needs to direct staff to get the design that he needs. But what you have been told by Mr. Shiner, Ms. Williams, and Mr. Urban, is that a canal, a navigable canal for the purpose of drainage is feasible. It is one of the three options that can be undertaken. And you know how I know that? Because I asked Mr. Zanoni, and I take Mr. Zanoni at his word, that Mr. Shiner, Ms. Will, it's Deidre Williams, right? Ms. Williams, are neutral on this concept. They're not saying no, they're not saying yes. But they know that that is an option, it's a remedy. A canal is a remedy. If you just look it up, what are your drainage flood mitigation remedies? A canal will always be in that answer. What you need to figure out is not all the reasons to say no, which is what we've heard this morning. You need to figure out, what are the reasons to say yes? You will not be able to develop that property unless you figure out a drainage solution. And if you don't get started now, you run the risk of hurting the two greatest touristic attractions we have to keep our economy at status quo, which is the Lexington and the Texas State Aquarium. Aren't you? Aren't you, I'm worried that if we don't take action, that we are going to be condemning those attractions to a negative outcome in the future. The canal is a layered approach to the coastal project, or the, I can't remember what, what did you use, Peter? It was coastal.
A coastal project.
A coastal project.
Yeah, as opposed to a drainage project.
Like that's new to us. We have coastal projects, and Mother Nature changes those coastal projects for us all the time. All the time. When we think we're gonna re-nourish north to south, and it becomes south to north, or east to west after a big storm. How many times have we seen that? Pakiri Channel peer review process, really? Well, we've all lived through that. Pakiri Channel shoaled up almost as quickly as it was dredged. I mean, Mother Nature has its problems. But you have got to figure out that if inaction is the worst thing you can do. You've asked me what your timeline is? It's time. Your timeline is time. Time kills deals, and it's about to kill this one. I really want to tell you that I have no financial interest, no even deep friendship interest with any of the parties, but I have a deep tie to this community and to its economic development and prosperity. And all the concerns that have been raised can be collaboratively worked on. But you must get started. You must show that there is an intent and a will to dedicate dollars to North Beach I do have some questions. And one of them is whether or not Capital Market Research actually developed a report. I just, I just want to see it. Because.
I think it's an important question.
And when was it commissioned?
We were brought into the issue a few, a couple of months ago, and I want to read something into, into the record if I may. That answers your question here, Judge. From Charles Heimsath, President, Capital Market Research in Austin, Texas, on Tuesday, November 26th, so last week, came back to us. Thank you for continuing to locate and send the links to these articles, to one of my staff, then Mike. I've reviewed the Canal Impact Study, which carefully outlines all of the economic and fiscal impacts based in large measure on the cost of the canal construction. I think the hotel analysis by Greg Eilman is compelling, but is based on the assumption that the canal is built and that tourism increases. What I don't find anywhere among these documents is a documented case study that shows a direct link between an infrastructure investment and the increase in land values and vertical development on adjacent parcels. This link is particularly important in this case because there is little, currently little demonstrated demand for anything other than short-term house rentals on North Beach. I think the Blanket Group needs to provide more evidence to justify their request to the city to issue bond debt to support the proposed canal. Now, understanding it's, it's a backward-looking plan, but all economic impact things are based on, it's like when you're, when you're buying stock, your broker tells you, you know, past performance is no indication of future, of future performance. So that's what he's saying. And I wanted to just be very clear that what he's saying is that we don't have the information from this yet. And I don't, it's not negative, it's not, it's not a positive, it's just, he's saying that, and this is a very well-respected firm here in Texas that was recommended.
Right.
And again, I'm not.
I just know that you know the difference between when someone says, "I'm gonna put new streets in your community," or "I'm gonna put new, you know, roads in your community," I mean, county roads with appropriate drainage. The idea that you would invest in infrastructure and not see a direct link to economic development is kind of ludicrous.
I think what we're saying here is not necessarily that. What we're saying is that we haven't seen any kind of evidence or any proposal from that so far.
And I don't even think economic development should be in the same discussion, although I think it's a tangentially related consequential argument of what a canal can bring. But let's face it, the purpose of the canal is to alleviate the drainage, right? And so I like it. I also want to direct your attention to something that took me all of like, two minutes to find on the internet. And that's after, you might be wondering about these funds that I mentioned, and if you haven't been to a hearing, I kind of have to ask why not? Because when someone gives me $4 billion to go chase, and they're for coastal projects like the one that your city staff has identified, I certainly would prepare comments and try to find out, if nothing else, signal to the General Land Office that we were interested in them. That would be first and foremost on my mind. But after Superstorm Sandy hit New York and New Jersey, HUD, through CDBG, the same exact mechanism, exactly appropriated $1 billion to the region. Through a competition, they said, "Come and figure out how to make our shoreline resilient." You know what they had to deal with? Seawalls, velocity zones, breakwater concepts, erosion, shoreline stabilization, habitat restoration, and the like. And guess what? A crazy plan developed called Scape: Living Breakwaters. The same exact project has been done before. This is off the coast of New York, off Staten Island. Although the coastal environment is different, nevertheless, it is a testament to whether or not something can be done out in the waters. Are you familiar with Scape?
I am.
With Tottenville? Did you want to say something?
And if I may, I have been part, Tammy and I both have been part of all of the resiliency meetings. I could not make it yesterday, but Tammy was in attendance.
Oh, I know, I saw her and talked to her.
City staff is providing written comments to the GLO. We have already provided comments throughout the process while it was in draft, and they were, you know, trying to figure out how to write it. So we have been actively involved, and we voiced a lot of the same concerns that you voiced at the meeting yesterday.
Right. I just need, we need partnerships there. And I know that you're gonna do your work. I mean, I don't think for a second you're not gonna submit comment. But the way this thing works is that we need to be speaking together. Because when you take the microphone and you speak, other judges, other commissioners come up to you, and they say, "Yes, I want to partner." But when they don't see the city speaking, that also tells us something. And so it's really important that we're there together.
Not sure if she spoke or not.
No, she, she didn't speak. I was there from start to finish. But that's not the point. The point is, is that we need to make sure that we're telling the whole story. I don't disagree with any of the concerns you had, okay? It's like, it's just one side of a coin. Everything that each of you said, Mr. Van Vleek, Mr. McGinn, Ms. Mederano, yourself, Yvette, they're all valid. They're all valid. Now, what if I said, "Do you stop being a prosecutor and come over to the defense side?" You see, if you're in a workshop, you present all sides. I want to see what can be done, not what Larry from FEMA is worried about. I don't care about Larry from FEMA. What I care about is what can be documented. I have lots of concerns about lots of things, but that's not gonna advance the ball here. Because Larry from FEMA doesn't live in Corpus Christi, Texas. He hasn't seen all the projects come and go. He hasn't been a part of the blight or the economic depression that we've had in our urban revitalization, you know, arena. This is why this project is so germane and so important. And the fact that you all mentioned no less than three times cutting through the beach, nobody thinks that's a good idea, cutting through the beach. Nobody. And the General Land Office probably wouldn't think it's a good idea either. But there are other ways to design this. And I'd like to hear from an engineer to come up and design, and talk about this design.
All right. Well, let, let's kind of wrap up your comments, and then we can kind of get to some others if you're good through there.
Well, you know, the bottom line is, is I would like to see you all present what I would consider both sides of the coin. That's what I'm a little absolutely flabbergasted about, is that when I come to a workshop, I really want to hear both the yes piece of it and the no piece of it. This isn't about a developer or one person. It's about the future of an entire area. And I kind of wanted to hear from Everett what he thinks about his precinct or his district, sorry, it's always precincts over here, Everett, about his district, because for me, the people there have already spoken. They're the ones that are behind this project. That's who I'd be worried about. I'd be worried if the people that are living there, Mayor, and Everett, didn't want it. I'd be worried if the businesses and the attractions that are there didn't want to see this type of development get done. And I know that Peter wants to study and to continue to get the valid information, and I personally support that. But I also know you can signal to developers that you're not going to study or design this to death, because I'm gonna tell you something, you can design and study this thing to death. It's very, very likely impossible, because there's going to be multiple ways to design. But the best way to do it is to get going, is to say that $40 million is worth the drainage investment. And is that gonna solve all your problems? No, it is not. It's not. But it's the first layer of a multi-layer approach, and it's worth that investment. And without it, you're gonna get nowhere.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Just, Pakiri Channel's only been dredged once since it opened, and that was in 2005. It was designed and has worked well above its original design. So I'm not sure where you got your information about it silting up as quick as it was opened. Pakiri Channel has worked way beyond the expectations in a positive way in terms of it. And the peer review was ordered by the General Land Office because they wanted to make sure that it was done right. Are there mistakes? Not all about mistakes, but there's circumstances. Harvey, obviously, is one. You can't, but you want to do everything humanly possible to make sure that you do it right the first time, so you don't have to do it again. But just that, I'm pretty sensitive to Pakiri Channel. I was quite involved with that project, and the county was, and the city was. And we all ought to take a lot of pride in what happened on Pakiri Channel. It was, it's, it's worked as designed plus, and it's only been dredged once since 2005.
And you don't think it needs any work?
Oh, yes. We've got some damage out there now from Harvey. No, it needs some work. I'm not arguing that.
And the stabilization that we were going to do, we no longer need, is not the current plan that we're gonna have in the future. Well, I don't want to get on a drift about Pakiri Channel. I don't want to get on a, on an out, I don't want to get lost on Pakiri Channel.
All right. Well, let, uh, let's just kind of start, work our way down, kind of like you did on the Commissioners. Mr. Hernandez, you got your light on, so that, we'll start that in.
Thank you, Mayor. Judge, Commissioners. I do have a few questions for staff based on some of the presentations they had. And also, I see we have the developer here as well, I may ask some questions of him In the presentation, there was a discussion for the velocity zones, I believe you put in there. Are these the same situations that we face in Flower Bluff and in, on the island?
Yes, it is. On the island, State Highway 361, there are dunes that protect from the velocity zone, so the velocity zone doesn't come as far inland. We do have velocity zone on Laguna shores, and we also have some on the back bay of 361. The, on the island proper, the velocity zone pretty much stops at the bulkhead around the island.
Okay. So just, but we do have them in other areas besides North Beach.
We do, correct.
And so we, and those same rules apply everywhere.
Correct.
Okay. This is on the economic development. Ian, if you can answer this question. Now, I have the actual economic development. This is probably the most robust economic impact projection statement that I have seen while I've been on City Council. I mean, it is pretty detailed, it has nice appendix with information, as I was saying. Is there anything specifically that you disagree with from this economic development?
The methodology's very solid. I mean, we.
I mean, but is there anything that you disagree with? I mean, that it wasn't covered or was done unprofessionally?
No, it was done to, it was done to a very professional, we were asked to review this document, and we did. And it was a very professional, comprehensive document. And the question, I think, we were asked to look at is, if this money is spent, will the city and county's money be recovered? And, and based on the, based on the economic impact study, sure. Now, my comment to, to, to you all earlier was, within the piece that the developer controls, Mr. Fraser Hotel, that's gonna generate $14 million in revenue. Now, there's three other hotels in that which aren't necessarily within the purview. That's not covered by any development agreement. And we don't yet have an identification of who's gonna do those, when they're gonna happen. And that's when, what our consultants and our staff was looking at is, we don't necessarily, it's, it's a, it's a really good plan, it's a really good economic impact study. The question is, and again, my comment to the council earlier and the Commissioners earlier was, was, are the protection mechanisms in there? So if all of this is developed as the plan shows, it's great.
Okay. And there was a comment that Judge Canales had made, mention of, that this is an infrastructure project that would not add, that you had mentioned that would not add value to the properties around it. Is that, are you saying that specifically?
No. Actually, let me be very clear on what we're saying, is infrastructure, we're not saying that the, if you build the infrastructure, it won't come. What we're saying is, we don't have the evidence that they're coming.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, if you have some infrastructure project, such as this canal, would that or would it not add value to the surrounding properties?
It would, it would if the other development, well, you've got to look at it as.
No, no, I'm just saying, just from a perspective of.
Does it generally remove?
Does it generally add value?
Let him answer your question.
Does it generally improve the value of the property? You know, yes, but does it solve the drainage issue? And, and again, if it solves the drainage issue, absolutely. Now, the engineers haven't said that, have they? I mean, have they? I mean, I would love to hear.
I believe so.
I'm not an engineer, and I'm not smart enough to answer.
Well, let's ask Mr. Urban. Mr. Urban, would this solve the drainage issue?
But let me, let me finish the question. And the economic impact analysis, if it's developed as it's presented, would pay for that canal, provided it, provided it addresses the drainage issue. Now, there are pieces of, we just don't have the information yet, and I think my comments were very much related. We don't have the information or the agreements in place to protect the city or the county from spending the money, and then if the development doesn't occur, then you, then you're upside down on the deal. Are you following?
Okay. I see what you're saying, but I was asking the question, if you believe that any, this infrastructure improvement would add value to the surrounding properties if it addressed the drainage?
If it addresses the drainage and brings more tourism, yes.
Okay. So they asked a question to Mr. Urban here. Would this canal solve the drainage problem to a certain extent to where it would mitigate it from what it is now?
It would be a very significant improvement, and the canal itself would be an oversized structure that is more than capable, more than, has more than adequate capacity to convey the water, the drainage water off that peninsula. So it would solve it from that perspective. However, we also recognize that there are some low areas that need to be raised, some streets that need to be raised and so forth, that still need to be addressed for the tidal flooding.
Okay.
So the canal is the backbone that goes in, that allows everything, the rest of the drainage improvements to, to, to work.
Okay. Thank you.
But by, can I just add, by itself, Mr. Urban, does it address drainage? If we just did the canal, would that solve the drainage problem?
If you just did the canal, you would still have tidal flooding issues in some areas that are low.
The answer's no, right? If we did the canal just by itself?
Canal by itself does not solve all the drainage issues.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So this, to address what City Manager Zanoni had mentioned, this is part of an overall project, right? We don't look at this in isolation, right? There's also aspects of the barrier islands or some sort of breakwater associated with this, you know? But to that point, if we, it's this option or nothing, basically, in a sense of whether we invest in North Beach for the drainage, whether it's a ditch, whether it's a canal or whatever, or we leave it the way it is now. Is that, is that the better option? I don't think so. So I want to address that specifically. I have to also make comments that I, in listening to the presentation, I've heard a lot of, thank you, thank you, Mr. Urban. It did seem very negative. And I, I don't know if that was the intent of the presentations to seem very negative, but I wanted, I wanted to bring, ask a question to the developer because Mark Van Vleek had mentioned. But I wanted, I wanted to bring, ask a question to the developer because Mark Van Vleek had mentioned some specific things that needed to be addressed. And I was wondering, Jeff, would you mind ask, asking some of these questions? He had brought up that there were some, some issues specifically around the, that needed to be answered in terms of specific flow of the, of the canal, water in the canal. Uh, you'd, obviously was, if you recall, it was one of the first questions that I ever asked you. And sediment, poss, uh, things that would have to address with sediment, the soil conditions underneath the, what used to be the railroad track or the right of way, that's in the center there between the streets there. And then also, uh, the, um, where the outfall or where the opening would be, where, I guess we have the, they may just show it right in the middle of the beach, but could you address that, please?
Yes.
So, first question, flow of water in the canal?
Pardon me?
The flow of water in the canal.
Yeah. Um, that's relatively simple. Uh, we still had to, he's talking about dead water on, on the canal, okay? Jim Shiner, who actually I've used Jim Shiner years ago in Pirate's Beach and Cove, because I've done a lot of stuff on the coast down in Pirates and Galveston. But to, um, I'm not worried at all about a dead zone on that canal. And I've built hundreds of millions of dollars worth of canals. It has to be designed properly, as Jim, Jim said yesterday and, and in the evening with the mayor. Yeah, it has to be designed. You have to get the right flows. Where is it going to exit? Out, I want to work with Mott McDonald and engineers on how you want to get the flows out to the bay itself. Those are all solvable, easy, you have to work at it. So.
Okay.
Silting up of the canal, um, it's interesting. We designed the roadways on both sides, so it'd be very easy to desilt the canal because you could use a track hoe from the road and pick, and take it out so you wouldn't have to use a dredge, which I've done several times. So it's a very easy solution to keeping the canals desilted over time. Can I address one other thing?
Sure. Sure.
When Ian got up here and talked about the study, okay? On the study, it says, um, four hundred rooms of hotels. And so they're not sure if these things are going to happen. We showed that we were going to build a hundred and fifty rooms. There's also a gentleman here, right there. He wants to build fifty-plus rooms. There's also another gentleman here who wants to start construction on his project. So it's not about that project. So if you look through that study, it's interesting, before the projects even started and before he even said yes, we're going to build two more restaurants of the four that's in the study, okay? Over two hundred rooms of the four hundred rooms are already right here in the room. If you just go twenty, twenty homes, okay? If you just go through the list of all that except for the amusement park, if you took everything else, rarely does those things ever happen before you even started, started construction. You have five years to get another two hundred-room hotel, another two restaurants. And that study, I thought, was so conservative because that's, that study says you make four million dollars on and above property taxes. So people, everything gets, nobody understands what that, that is, that's unbelievable what could do to North Beach. So to think that people would go build there, there's two people right here in this room. There's a million dollars and four million dollars sitting right in this room.
Thank you. Um, the, one other question I had is that there was also mentions of specific agencies that we have to deal with, specifically the Army Corps of Engineers and the GLO. Have you, has your, have you discussed anything with them or has your organization or engineering?
Absolutely. In fact, we started this whatever, I don't know, a year ago or a year and a half ago. We have every agency up in our office.
So you've spoken with the GLO and, and the Army Corps of Engineers?
But you still have to have a plan to submit. But have they come there? The GLOs said, you know, we talked about the land out in front. Can we build islands or breakwaters? Gone through the process, but we haven't submitted a plan yet. But yes, everybody's been informed ever since the first day we started working on this as a task force.
Okay. Uh, more specifically, I mean, have they given you any indications that they were negative against this type of project? Or would it be something that would be interested?
Anytime, this isn't my first rodeo, okay? Um, I've gotten many core permits and many proj, projects done and Waters of the U.S. and worked with Fish and Wildlife and all these different agencies. Yeah, they're going to tell you all the concerns. And what you heard today was a list of all the concerns. Yeah. Same concerns that the aquarium went through. So, I mean, you just have to go through that process. There's nothing outstanding that they're going to say, like there's a barrier reef out there and we're going to go destroy. You know, that would be, no, it's a dead zone out in front of North Beach. So to build barrier islands or build a jetty, that's, that's making it, uh, uh, something come alive. There, it's a positive thing. All agencies that we're working on is very, very, very positive.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Black. Ed, I'm sorry. One last question, and this is a question for the city manager. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about, um, obviously financing of this project. Have we, have we discussed this with our financial consultant regards to how did, would this would be financed without raising taxes?
Without raising taxes?
Right. Would this be, would this be utility, um, bond or would this be some sort of aspect? Where, where would, is there any thought processes to working with our financial advisor on this?
Yes, there is, Councilman. We have, uh, I met with him personally a couple of weeks ago on the, the overall city finances. And we did discuss that this is a project we're working on. So we will be bringing him in once we internally get our financial, uh, plan together. So we're going to do, we'll take care of the first step and then bring them in as a partner in reviewing, peer reviewing our assessments.
Okay. So you've just done an initial discussion with him. He hasn't actually reviewed any of the possibilities for financing this?
Right. That's correct. The staff, we, the staff hasn't put together a financing plan yet. It's on our work plan to develop that. We have, um, we have some initial work being done to include what else do we have to do in our utilities and water, wastewater? What are the capital needs? Uh, the same for our roads and, and stormwater and drainage, uh, uh, parks and other facilities. So we're assembling, what do we need to do in the city? What are the top priorities? And then how do we pay for those? It's a two, it's a two-phase process, not just what can we buy, but what do we have to buy? So that works underway.
So when, when do you see that being completed?
Uh, it's going to, I don't have a timeline right now, but it'll be a couple of months. Uh, it's something we're beginning to work on, um, and it'll be a couple of months still.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Can I just add too, that on the, the, the Commissioners Court hasn't had the opportunity to be in several meetings that we've had with the city council? So we've already, we've talked about the positive aspects of this project. We've, um, we've shown different videos and slides. And today was a, it's kind of a check-in on where we are. And if it sounds negative, that's the reality. There's a lot of work and progress. And this just tells the council and the Commissioners Court and the community where we are. We're not trying to be negative or positive. We're just saying these are the facts. And they, they seem, if they appear negative, it's the reality of it, that there's several requirements from the federal agencies. There's several safety concerns. There's several issues that we have to grapple as a community as we move forward in this project. So that's, it's, I just want to try to explain that this is not, this is one presentation and many that have happened over the past at least six months that I've been here and I suspect longer. So there's been other conversations that have been more positive and maybe more dramatic or glamorous. But we're just telling you, hey, based on what we've been working on for the past six months, here we are today. This is the snapshot of where we are. And it's things that we want to positively address to move forward. One thing we haven't talked about is risk to the ratepayer and the taxpayer. And it's the council's and staff's responsibility to make sure we, we minimize risks as much as possible for the ratepayer, taxpayer. And by providing the council, who has to make the decision, all the information they need to make that risk the least, not for a developer, but for the taxpayer, that is goal number one, I think, for us up here. So just some, just some context.
I, I mean, I certainly appreciate that. I just, I think it's really important since I haven't heard from, I don't know if you have a civil engineer on staff, do you?
Yes, we do.
So for me, what I was hoping that I could obtain here is a what-if scenario if you do nothing, if you don't go forward. Because what you're trying to present is a series and scenario of regulatory environments which are always present. When you, when we decided to dredge the channel wider and deeper, if somebody had said all of their concerns had really articulated them from the Corps of Engineers, from NEPA, from, from every, and that's why environmental impact statements are done, we would have never gone forward with that project if that's all that was given to me in a context.
And Peter, to be.
That's really what I'm concerned about.
And to be fair, Peter, um, this, this is a joint city council and Nolasis County workshop.
Right.
I don't watch city council meetings, no offense. They don't probably watch county commissioners meeting.
Yeah.
So I, I want to echo that with, with what the judge said. This is the first, this was the presentation and there was no two sides of the coin presented. And I get that you're presenting updates, but we don't have, we don't have the, the luxury of hearing all the other presentations that have been made that were positive.
Yeah.
But this was the one we were invited to and the presentation made came off to me extremely negative in regards to, as the judge said, it seems though, it seems as though we're trying to talk this down and to death. And so I appreciate you clarifying that. And I'm sure there was a lot of other things.
Right.
But it did, it took, in my opinion, come off that way as well.
I don't think we heard any staff members today, nor myself, say we don't want to do this project. We do want to do it. We're just telling you, these are the facts that we have to work through, but.
Uh, city manager, I just, could you enlighten me? I don't recall a positive presentation. Do you, I'm, I'm sorry?
Can we move on, please, and, and finish comments?
Just, just that?
Yeah, I didn't think this was a very positive presentation, to be perfectly honest with you. It would have been great if it would have had some positives. In fact, my first inclination was just to leave when I heard who was going to be doing, doing the presenting. First off, when we talk about all the challenges and all the issues, geez, we could, we could engineer this, this whole project to death. There's three issues that I think would need to be considered related to the drainage, which is, I think, without the drainage, without a drainage solution, you, you've, you've got no investment in North Beach going forward. I mean, I, I don't know who might disagree with that statement, but without a drainage solution, we've got nothing. And the three elements, I'm not an engineer, but based on what I've heard, every time we attack one or address one and then address another and a potential solution for the other, then another one comes up. And to my knowledge, the three issues that I've heard are having a canal or drainage, a ditch, elevation, elevating, basically the peninsula so that it's high enough so the drain, the water will drain off. And then the streets. Now, again, I take issue with a, just a calculated toss out there that redoing or increasing the elevation of the streets or lifting the streets is going to be thirty-five million dollars when I know that North Beach is not going to develop going forward the way it developed, you know, fifty, sixty years ago. There's going to be a lot of lots that are going to be combined and they're going to look for easement closures, street closures in order to be able to do their projects. So at the end of the day, when you get the projects on the table, you can determine which major arteries are going to need to be built up and what are going to be necessary to be able to get to and from the, the Lexington and, and, and the, um, the aquarium, but not all of North Beach, uh, the street system in North Beach is going to need to be lifted. I've also, um, in terms of elevation, right now, and we can, ten, ten, spend ten years getting just the right engineering and even just the right engineering with the Army Corps of Engineers and with all the, the players, didn't dictate that Packard Channel was going to be just right. Even before, with all due respect, even before Hurricane Harvey, that seawall, the, 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 the barrier along, uh, North Beach's bulkhead was already coming apart. It was already breaking up into pieces because it was, and that was designed by our, by our federal partners. So again, no matter what amount of engineering dictates that everything that you do is going to be just right. Uh, we can, like I said, again, we can spend all the dollars in the world and it's still going to, going to mean that it's not going to work. Also, if you look for some practical solutions, that doesn't mean that they're not going to work. I mean, I, I look at Brownsville, I look, you look about, uh, uh, being coastal and having coastal issues. I, I think about Brownsville, I think about the Resacas down in Brownsville and they just dug out ditches in order to be able to drain. We do the same thing in a lot of areas of Flower Bluff and the island and Southside too, to create areas where water would drain into in order to develop the, the land around it. I know that there's not a lot of land in North Beach to deal with, but still, I think that, uh, we can find the solutions that are more practical and that are likely to work versus something that we think we guarantee is going to work because we spent all the engineering dollars in, in the world and, and, and still at the end of the day, because of changing, uh, the changing environment, the changing, um, tide and everything else might not work. The biggest thing right now is that, in my, in my book, is that I saw FEMA. And yeah, it, it, again, the reason I say it sounds negative is because when we got all the recommendations for the FEMA and what we adopted related to the island and the velocity zones and, and the free onboard elevation levels, I mean, I didn't hear anything about the impact it was going to have to the adjacent lots, the people that were, that are currently built at, at, at slab level or slab grave. And again, that those lots could be, could be inundated if they're surrounded. I don't remember recall.
So we did have that discussion when we brought Freeboard forward. Freeboard would be the one that would impact.
We still adopted it.
And, and we talked about the discussion for lot drainage issues in zone.
But here, it seems to be a big issue.
And, and, well, this is a different zone than where Freeboard primarily impacts. We talked about it in Zone A, which allows slab-on-grade structures, whereas most of your drainage is an issue. This, in a velocity zone, your structure is elevated. It's elevated five, six, eight, ten feet above grade. So the drainage issue that was there today still is there whenever you put the structure. It's just not a habitable space being inundated. So we did have those discussions when we talked about Freeboard for a few years before it was adopted. But, but velocity zone's a little different zone than Zone A where you do have drainage impacts if you're elevating above your neighbor.
But the thing is, if you're going to address it and you're going to try to, to develop an area in a manner that's going to be most likely to, to, to endure the forces of nature, wouldn't you want to do it when you only have a hundred structures on North Beach versus when you have six hundred, like we had in the past? I mean, you're going to affect, and there's, out of the hundred and some odd structures we have in North Beach, a lot of them are built way above what we're going to adopt. So wouldn't you want to adopt it now, right now that you?
It is adopted for North Beach as well. The velocity zone is in North Beach as well. So the, the one-foot Freeboard is any special flood hazard area in the city. So every new development or substantial, um, substantially damaged structure that goes back to rebuild has to meet that one-foot Freeboard. So that, you're right, they are elevated usually above what they need to be. But that doesn't, that doesn't play a part in the lot drainage that's already existing in a velocity zone because we're not putting the structures right on the floor. We're putting them up in the air and we're not bringing in, you know, massive amount of fill to elevate the lot, increasing the drainage onto the neighbors' lots.
But you're going to have to elevate those, you're going to have to build in, put in some, some fill in order to elevate those lots that you do want to develop.
And so FEMA's saying that it's not that you cannot do it. They're just saying if you want to do this project, they're not saying no. They're just saying that we have some steps we have to follow. So what we provided to them was the urban report, um, that we received as well. And so that's what they had to go based upon for guidance. And also talking to Mr. Blackard, who's on the task force, he was on the phone call and they asked questions back and forth with him. And we all discussed, and so they just said, as proposed today, these would be our concerns. They're not saying that it's not a viable project and that you can't bring in fill. They're just saying that we have to take all of these things into consideration if we want to move forward in that manner.
Well, I just think it's, at some point, we as a community have to decide, are we going to, just going to look the other way? And right now, in this particular time, I think because of the fact that we're doing the improvements to the bridge, digging out the bridge, we've got, if we did the canal or don't do, or did a drain stitch, we'd have some fill material available. The port is dredging the, 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 the ship channel right now. So we'd have fill that we could actually provide minus the labor, free to the people that want to elevate their, their properties out there, which would then give you the more possibility of being able to, to, to build out.
There is a limitation on the amount for existing structures. We don't want to do greater than two foot of fill because it could compromise the existing foundations. So there, there's some tricky nuances that we'd have to look at, lot-specific, as I mentioned earlier. We would need to look to see how that foundation was engineered to see if it could take the. We would need to look to see how that foundation was engineered, to see if it could take the additional load on it. There's a lot of stipulation. So again, it's not to say that it cannot be done, but there's just additional steps that we'd have to do.
That's for the existing structures. You're not talking about new structures. And again, I mean, I don't know, if I, if I look at eighteen, if there was six hundred at one time and there's eighteen, excuse me, a hundred structures now, that's only about eighteen percent of potential development you have out there. Basically, the rest of the land, the other, if my math's correct, eighty-four percent of the property in North Beach is not developed.
Correct.
There's nothing on it.
So, so the problem with only enforcing it on your new development and not your existing development, not putting any improvements on that lot, is your development is piecemealed, so it's infill, correct? It's not, you don't have an acre available that you can just elevate the entire acre. We have structure, structure, vacant lot, structure, structure, vacant lot. So if we're elevating that vacant lot, we're diverting the natural flow of waters onto the neighbors if we can't elevate them successfully. So I think you have to look at existing first and then you do your new construction.
Doesn't state law require you to be able to mitigate the runoff of your?
You're supposed to, yes. If you, if you do put it onto your neighbor's lot and that's not natural flow, you are in violation of state law, correct?
Correct, yes. Anyway, I, I just think that overall, the presentation was negative and we still haven't addressed the issues and quite frankly, I, I don't, going forward, I don't, I don't see us being able to reach a decision because I don't think we're going to, we're going to get to a point where we're going to take enough objective, objective information, or put enough, uh, objective information in front of us in order to be able to make the right decision. Thank you.
Hey Rudy, can you address that with Jeff Blackard on the water going to other lots? Because he says that's not true.
Will. Give it an interest out while you remain here.
Okay, well, if you want both sides, or not.
We get to both sides of that.
No, you're not.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we let everybody make their comments, Mayor, and then afterwards, if there's time for?
All right, I'm, I'm done. Let everybody else go.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I want us to all consider where we would be if we had listened to all the times that we've been told, no, we couldn't do something. Um, I, I don't believe that we would be up here. Uh, I wouldn't be up here if I had listened to all the reasons why I, I couldn't do what I wanted to do. But, um, you overcome that by looking for solutions, and I believe that a project like this needs to happen in our city. I, I appreciate all the hard work that city staff has done and the North Beach Task Force has done in identifying, uh, roadblocks and, uh, identifying the questions that need to be asked. From, and, and saying that, we, we had a lot of information presented today. And Peter, I, I know that you can't take direction from just one council member, or just a mayor, or just a handful of council members, but just to let you know where I'm at with it, I would appreciate if you and staff, from this point forward, look for solutions on how we can make this project happen. I think it needs to happen for the sake of North Beach and for the sake of our city. We need this project. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, thank you, County, County for coming here. Thank you, uh, staff for the presentation on there. Uh, we talked about drainage issues. Uh, North Beach is not alone in drainage issues. Uh, I've had two subdivisions and District Four flood, I mean, houses flood, people's lives have been felt by it. So it's not the only drainage on there. That, uh, and on drainage, so we, we have the canal, we have drainage. And in two thousand and eighteen, July of two thousand and eighteen, that HDR did a drainage study to solve the drainage. And the estimated cost on that was four point nine million dollars. Is that correct? Jim, it's your old outfit. But the, the canal is, is, is much more than drainage. And, um, we also know we have coastal flooding. And the canal, as, as Mr. Urban said, will not solve our coastal flooding on there. So that's another part of this. And, and if you were listening to this today, you'd say, this council is not supportive of North Beach. This council has voted sixty-two to one on seven issues promoting North Beach. This council passed the TERS, a TERS that's been in works for two thousand and nine, supporting North Beach. We're just finishing up North Shoreline. That's a one point seven million dollar project that had drainage solutions in there. If you're like I am and go out to North Beach after every rain now, you see that the fact that we've cleaned the inlet boxes, what Flatiron Dragados is doing, improving the drainage under one eighty-one, uh, those have just been going in in the last year. Drainage is improving. North Beach is improving. We've got building going on on North Beach. Property is selling on North Beach. We're making great progress on North Beach with it. Now, we've got an issue, it's fog. We don't know how much this is going to cost. I've said forty-one million dollars. I like the canal at forty-one million dollars. Am I satisfied that it will be forty-one million dollars? I do have coastal experience. I do have developing experience. No. Do we know where the canal is going to be located? We have an approximate, but it's changing on there. We're just seeing recently, all of those changed the cost on it. One thing I looked at was the cost of a bridge. So we're, on the design, we have a twenty-two-foot vertical clearance bridge. Costed in there, Mr. Urban's cost, one point eight million dollars. We just, uh, led a contract for a fifteen-foot, seven-foot lower bridge on, on the island. Fourteen million dollars. Now, that's twice the bridge, it's, it's four lanes rather than two, so you cut that in half. I'm very concerned about this cost. Forty-one million dollars. We all know North Beach can go places. We all know North Beach has issues too. And when we go out to our taxpayers, to our ratepayers, we need hard numbers for them. We can't, you know, just looking here today, so we've got to cost forty-one point two million dollars on the canal, but we don't know where that entrance is going to be. If we move to the north on that entrance, it's going to change the cost. We know on the water circulation, on that original cost estimate, it didn't call for improving Pearl Street where the box culverts were going to be with it. You know, these, these are little issues we've got to work through. And, uh, we've got to be able to tell our public what something's going to cost. To do an open-ended checkbook here, I don't think any of us really want to do that. So is this a forty-two million dollar project? We know we need to raise the streets, so is it seventy-seven million dollar project? We heard about the velocity zones on there, so what would the cost of a, a seawall be on there? Are we up to a hundred and fifty, two hundred million dollars? These are questions that we need to answer. We, as, sitting here, just, we all love the project. We all have seen the eminent, uh, the video on it. You know, it's, it's really nice. What's it going to cost? What are, what do we have the capability? Yes, we, we can go out there and it's going to increase property values, there's no doubt about it. That canal goes through there, it's going to create building on there. It's already increased the land values. Uh, there, there's property moving now. But we have to know the cost. We can't, we don't have an empty checkbook. Okay, so if we say canal forty-one point two million dollars, we're okay with that? Is the county willing to come in there and cover their difference if it comes in at sixty on there? Uh, like I say, three, three of you all have been on the council. You know, we did the TERS, this council did. We are improving North Beach. We believe in North Beach. Sixty-three to one is what we voted for North Beach. But we have to know what it's going to be. What are our issues that we can say, oh, it's, it's a negative on there? But we've got to know. Where can we make that entrance? How is that circulation going to go? Because it all affects the price with it. We know we need to raise. One thing that wasn't mentioned here, North Beach is sinking. It's got one of the highest rates of subsidence along this Texas coast. It's twenty inches lower than it was in the nineteen nineteen storm when two hundred and eighty people died. So not only do we need to raise the twenty inches that we didn't have, but we need to, if we're going to build it for the future, as Mr. Urban said, we need to go, if we're building on a fifty-year horizon, ten and a quarter inches above what we think it should be now because it's going to sink that much, are twenty inches if we go on a hundred year, and that's saying sea level doesn't increase with it. Again, what's it going to cost? So as we do this, we, we've got to know the facts. To me, this, this is very foggy. Like I say, I'm glad, forty-one point two million dollars for the canal we all talked about, it'll take care of at, at least the rain drainage, it won't do anything to take care of the coastal flooding, that's another thirty-five million, but I support that. But is it forty-one point two? Is it sixty-one point two? Is it a hundred million? I don't know. Thanks.
It's after eleven, so I appreciate everyone that's continuing on with this workshop. Thank you, county commissioners, judges, council members. Uh, yeah, I was a big proponent of wanting to have a workshop. Um, I thought that we'd be able to roll our sleeves up and have some open dialogue and ask questions and really try to get a good understanding of where we're at. Um, it had a different feel for me too. It didn't feel like this was a workshop. I don't know what the mission statement, when I was in the military, we had a mission statement on terms of what our marching orders were and, and, and terms of going forward and giving a presentation. But as I listened to the presentation, I was hoping that I would gain some real valuable knowledge in terms of sitting here, taking up everyone's time. The interesting fact is, is that we, we've had mul, we've had multiple meetings on this. We've talked as a council about this. We've heard a lot about some of the pros and cons of this project. I've talked to the community. You know, there is, we talk about two sides of the coin. You know, I understand and I keep hearing and I'll, and, and I'll, and I guess we'll continue to hear this, about if you don't do these things, uh, you're going to be known as a council that fails to get things done. When this council has the Barrier Islands, there was a point in time when it was thought, okay, well, we can't get the vote done on the, on the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar Barrier Island deal. We, we postponed it for a week and then we end up getting a unanimous vote on that. We went through as, as a council in nine months and were able to get this TERS in place. And because of that TERS, we actually already had a meeting and we approved an incentive to have a hotel at thirty-nine point one million. I believe we approved seven point eight million toward that project in incentives for Mr. Fraser's Hotel. The other thing is, is that when you take a look at the Lighthouse project, we were behind and we supported the Type A B board on that project without an issue. But this is the council that's known not to get things done. So we go ahead and we move forward. And I, and again, I am a little bit disappointed because I was hoping that we would have an environment where we could ask a lot of questions, and I don't feel like I gained any more knowledge about this project than prior to being here, and that's a little disappointing. But the other thing I have to really look at is the fact is, will we ever have enough information? Is there ever going to be a point in time when we can sit there and resolve a hundred percent of the unknown? When you sit there, I, and you know what? What's interesting is that I was out at holiday at the Mingar Hotel in San Antonio. My father-in-law is a, uh, engineer. And he goes, you know what was a good thing back in the old days? Is that the guy that had the vision to build this hotel didn't care about the cost. He had the vision to build it. Now, I know we have accountability and we're supposed to be good stewards of our money. But at the same time, I also thought we would have a workshop which would lay out a plan to talk a little bit about how the possibilities of funding this. And we went this entire workshop with even giving an inkling of the possibility of how we could even go about funding this project. And why is it that some of us feel that it's a forty million dollar project and some of us feel it's a hundred million dollar project? And if it was a hundred million, million dollar project, what would that do? We need both sides of the spectrum. We need to understand what the conservative costs are and what are the costs if they get out of control. We understand that so that we can make an, an, an idea assumption in terms of what is our return on investment. Right now, we have one thing that I really don't understand, the fact that we have pretty much shoved this under the rug. We have multiple developers that are willing to go into this and go forward with the projects to help us eliminate our risk. But we treat that like it doesn't mean anything. Oh, we got a couple developers over here and here's the mountain of things that we have to accomplish. I, I, unfortunately, this was a waste of time, and I apologize on behalf of the people that are here, because we need to go back and really take a look at what it means to have a workshop. And the funny thing about this is I pleaded, I had multiple, multiple meetings about how I felt this workshop should be structured and what we needed to have happen, and that hasn't happened. And I, and I apologize, because I am no further in terms of where we should be than before I walked in this room at nine o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I'll keep mine pretty compact since, uh, we've had a lot of sharing. I wrote a few things down. I, I agree, I think it's a glass half-empty presentation, but I don't think any of them have been a glass half-full. In fact, I do think this has been moderately more positive some, than some of our other presentations. Um, because certain departments in the city are now getting involved, AKA the task force confusion earlier in the business. Azon has done a good job. In fact, she's been doing a good job over there on North Beach since we've been doing the boardwalk discussions when Alyssa was here. But, uh, Arlene, you filled her shoes very quickly. We haven't had a comprehensive drainage solution on North Beach for over fifty years. I don't care what anybody says, because not since the culverts discussions were being brought up, when we were taking down the other Harbor Bridge and building this current one, the land discussions and the disputes on who is going to be maintaining it and taking it over, we actually have never really finalized. And I think the state has, but I don't think that if it, if that mitigation fifty years ago was put under the city to take care of this, then I think that we need to look at that. That's old records. I'm sure it's, probably doesn't work with what we have, but I do, would like to look at it. Uh, why is North Beach sinking? There's a whole bunch of different opinions out there. How much sand are we replacing every two years because it's sinking or potentially eroding into the ocean? Uh, we just, we would like to see some of the other things that may not be directly affiliated but could indirectly affiliate. Trying to take the Councilman Molino approach on getting my point across, very glass half-full, uh, as Commissioner Chesney saw me this morning, the glass half-full attitude pulling out of the neighborhood. But, uh, I really appreciate what you had to say, Councilman Roy. Uh, I know this means a lot to you, and it means a lot to a lot of us, and, uh, we do want to see the best for North Beach because they deserve it. Thank you, that's all I got.
Mayor, Your Honor, Commissioners, council members. First off, um, you know, I, I, you know, I, I, a lot of times I try to say, um, in order to make a decision, we have to eliminate the rhetoric, the hyperbole, the public shaming, the cherry picking of facts, and so that way we can get to, what is it that we want to accomplish? About a week ago, I said, what's the ask? And, and I'm, I'm still, I think that the ask is to fix the drainage problem. And I think it's unanimous among the county commissioners and the council that we want to fix the drainage problem. And, I mean, it's that simple. And in, in any task, we have to, we have to identify the dream. We have to identify the dream. Uh, we have to identify the obstacles which were eloquently brought up today, and I think that's important. And my father used to say, you plan for the worst and you hope for the best. So unless you're there at that worst, then, and, and that's where we're at, and I'm trying to keep out the rhetoric, especially since when I said that, but, and then we have to know that we have to manage the obstacles as we go through there, because you can't identify everything, just as everybody's eloquently said. So, um, I, I've been involved in, now, in these short eleven months, or you could say long eleven months. months, at least seven projects in my district alone. One yesterday was in particular a development about a hundred-and-fifty million? Dan? Yeah. And, you know, the ask was not so great. And, you know, Urban is involved with three of them. Okay? And, you know, the thing is, is that I come back to, where's all the drama coming from? And the drama is because we have a developer that's got a specific timeline. And we want, we want to, we don't wanna let that go. And, I mean, we're enthusiastic. We don't wanna let that go. And, you know, it's, it's just like having the opportunity and sometimes you gotta, you know, like the song says, you gotta know when to hold them, know when to fold them. But when we're dealing with, you know, people dragging on me about, hey, fix my streets, hey, you know what, there's not enough code enforcement people to go around, my neighbor doesn't cut his grass, there's got cars parked, because I live in one of the poorest districts. I mean, I am, I have one of them. I mean, it could be argued between one, two, and three, you know, where it is. But there's those issues that obviously have to be fixed. And when we go back, it's just all the things that Greg so eloquently brought up. All that, we've gotta identify a price tag. And in order to identify the price tag, we need to identify all the obstacles. So I'm enthusiastic, I think the drainage is gonna get fixed. It's just a matter of, candidly, is it gonna fit in with the timeline of the developer? And that's the hard decision, that's the whole bottom line, if we can make that decision. And I candidly said on the news last week, I have a difficult time making that decision without identifying a price tag. And that's really the whole challenge. That's really the whole bottom line of the challenge. We gotta identify the obstacles. And I commend staff. I mean, there's been hours and upon hours and upon hours in the last sixty days that have been working on this. And that's because of you fine people of being passionate about this project. So we have to give it to our city manager. I think our staff deserves a hand. Now, some of them, I enjoy working with some of them more than others, I'll admit, you know? But the thing is, is that, that's really the whole issue. So we need to have a determinate price tag, and that's my whole bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, thank you for being here, and staff, and all the time everybody's put This is a little bit disappointing. And unfortunately, I think this got off with some comments that I don't necessarily appreciate because we do, we do know what we're doing here and we do have good leadership. And we don't need lessons on, you know, what we should be looking at and what we should be focusing on. We've been focusing on, and Carolyn, I mean, both of y'all that have been on council know, unfortunately, yes, things take some time to finally come to fruition. But to come here on invitation, as you put it, Judge, and kind of talk down to us as if we're not, we're not for working together. The word partnership means everything. I know it does to me. And unfortunately, for many reasons, this one has not moved in the right direction. And it's very sad. It is very sad. But as I said yesterday to Mr. Blackard and Mr. Frazier in a meeting, it is what it is and we are where we are. So today, it's been mentioned once, maybe twice, once, I think. We are talking at the end of the day about a timeline, a deadline, I'm sorry, deadline. It's not that we don't want this, it's ludicrous for anyone to say, you should be the, or do you wanna be remembered to be the council to not do anything? We have done so much and we continue and we work in unison. I mean, all you have to do is look back to see how things were in different times and years, years past. We're not a perfect council, but we work in unison and we have invested and we have created a TERS because it was requested, down to the numbers. And that's okay. That's good. We want to work together. Anyone that says we're not, as someone put it earlier, is not paying attention. We are. And yesterday, I addressed Mr. Frazier, who, I know he's not here today, I keep looking at Mr. Blackard, but, and I said, Mr. Frazier, we have to work together. It's the deadline that's the problem. Because I don't think that at the county, you make decisions without your process in place, your due process. You don't do that. Because if you did, you wouldn't be sitting in the chairs you do sit at. We have a process we have to go through. It isn't that we don't wanna do this. If it's a hundred million, so be it. We don't know. I have a responsibility, and I said this yesterday, to the citizens, not to the county commissioners, not to the developers, to, and not only, to North Beach, to the citizens of this city entirely, to say, this is how I came to this decision. I'm gonna call it Mr. Shiner because I want him to explain publicly what we heard yesterday. Deidra Williams is not here today. She also had some wonderful things that she brought to light. Basically, she was saying, you have to know these things. These are very critical things in a project like this that you need to know. That's where I sit today. I sit with you. But you're in the same seats we are. But with a county, a different title, same seats. You have to do your due diligence. And I understand what you guys are saying. This has been going on for two years or however long. And we can sit here and say, well, you know, the deadline was given to us in October and Mr. Frazier told, Mr. Frazier told me yesterday. He thought everything was going well. He didn't think the deadline, giving that information, was critical. Because I said, why wasn't this given to us like upfront, the day you started all of this, so that we could be working with that deadline and know, hey, we've got this deadline to help him help us? He just, and it's, he was genuine. He's a genuine person. But he didn't think that that was going, you know, that that was gonna become an ordeal. It's become an ordeal because everything that has happened or that isn't happening is because there is this deadline. And we have a due diligence to three-hundred-and-twenty thousand people of the city of Corpus Christi. And this is a very difficult position. Because do I want economic development? Absolutely. Will I ever be against? I won't. But first and foremost, I'm a guardian of the people who elected me to be here, first and foremost. And I know you guys understand that. But the people of the city have to know, what does this mean for me? If we spend forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred million dollars? Who can answer that? Mr. Zanoni, can you? Okay.
Well, it sounds like Mr.
I don't know, hold on a second.
It sounds like Mr. Urban that you hired answered it for you when he took the microphone and said that the canal would help with drainage.
Yes, yes, but we also have to remember, Judge, that what Mr. Urban has provided is a desktop study. And unfortunately, Ms. Williams couldn't be here.
But Ms. Williams is neither a hydrologist nor she is she an engineer.
No, she's not. But she has very good information that needs to be, needs to be out here that we all need to hear. However, Mr. Shiner is here and he is a coastal engineer. So I would love for you to come up, sir, if you wouldn't mind. Because again, Judge, this information, it's critical. I mean, this is stuff that we are being, information is being put in front of us that I'm, we can't ignore that, we can't ignore it. So, Mr. Shiner, could you share some of the points that were made yesterday in regards to your department, if you will, as well as Ms. Williams?
Sure. Just by way of background, I'm not for or against the project. Actually, I lean towards being for the project. I've been working on Corpus Christi Beach since nineteen eighty-three, really nineteen eighty. Did the first erosion study of sand on the beach and it resulted in the rock growing at the north end that slowed down the erosion loss. And our company has done multiple studies. We did the beach renourishment that did occur. Just, and I've met with Jeff going back, I think started in June, and been in there multiple times. So I'm not against the project. I'm not working for Jeff. I don't work for him. He asked one time if I wanted to work for him. I told him, no, I didn't. And I'm not working for the city. I've worked for the city many times in the past. So I don't have a dog in the hunt other than, I've done a lot of work on beach erosion and I don't wanna see it get screwed up. When I see the entrance going through the middle of the beach, that will screw up the sand movement on the beach. It will. Jeff understands that and he said, we can do something different. What is that? We don't know. We might put something at the north end, we might put something at the south end. It's up in the air. I have concerns about water quality in the canal. I've done canal subdivisions, little canal subdivision, the harbors across the road from this project. I designed that as a very young engineer. You gotta have good water quality. That's essential. You don't want to have fish kill in your brand-new development with all these forty-million-dollar hotels. Can you get around that? Yes, you can. I've done enough design work to know that the problems that we see can very likely be solved. Are they solved right now? Have, is, I don't even know where the entrance is gonna be today. Where will the entrance be? We don't know that. There's just a lot of unknowns. Well, the water quality, can the water quality be taken care of? Yes, it can, but it depends on how you do the entrances. The breakwaters, big concern. The way it's drawn right now on big rendering in the photographs that you've seen, it essentially takes out all the wave energy, so you don't have waves on the beach. It becomes, instead of North Beach, it becomes North Lagoon. And lagoons have grasses growing around them, salt grasses. So you become very concerned about that. I understand that they've tasked McDonald to make sure there is some wave energy coming in and modify the pretty picture that's been drawn. So there's a lot of things that are in motion right here that can, I think, can be solved if you, the breakwaters are a big issue. That becomes a big permitting issue. If you don't have the breakwaters, and I actually have heard that maybe we don't do breakwaters. Maybe they just go away and we just do the canal. And in my mind, that might even be a better deal. We have the GLO that, they own the beach. They provide a lot of the money, most of the money, for sand renourishment. They have been, and they plan to do that in the future. Maybe we don't need breakwaters. And that makes the permitting much easier. So I guess the bottom line is, there's lots of concerns. I'm not being negative. I'd like to see the project go forward. I would. And I think, and I said yesterday in a meeting with the mayor and Mr. Blackard and others, that there's a lot of unknowns. Are they solvable as an engineer? I think they are. I've done a lot of this kind of work. I think they're solvable, but there's a lot of unknowns right now. And I think if I was sitting on the council, I'd be concerned about what Mr. Smith said, how much is it cost? If we move the entrance to the south end instead of one bridge, there's two bridges. Well, that's gonna make the cost go up. If we go out the north end, who owns the property? How do we get there? How far out do we have to dredge to get deep enough water for the boats? That affects the cost. So it's those kind of issues. If there's other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So at the end of the day, at the end of the day, you believe that some of the issues that were brought up by staff today regarding whether it's renourishment or erosion or wave action can all be engineered? Those are all solvable problems when you sit down with the developer. Roland asked, Councilman Barrera asked probably a great question, which is, what is the ask? Remind me why we're here again? It was my understanding from reading the agenda item and no other, that we were here to discuss the potential of what this project could do if a navigable, navigable canal were constructed. So the ask is whether or not city council should move forward with an investment for some amount of dollars for them to determine by contract what that investment is. If that investment grows because there's breakwater issues or seawall issues, that's really not an engineer's concern, that's more of a financial concern for the policymakers. What is of concern is what you bring to the table, which is that your expertise is in You think that it's a worthy project and you think it's a project that can find solutions when you move into the design process. None of the issues that have been raised are really that unique when you're dealing with any type of infrastructure on a shoreline, are they? There are all the types of questions you ask, there are all the types of concerns that you bring up. I mean, we're not unique in that, are we?
They're all addressable, I think, from what I know from experience. It's gonna take some work. And I think the big issue is just how much does it cost? If you got, if you got a blank check, they can all be fixed.
Engineers have a way of taking us outer space, to other planets. All people have created, from the Romans, I mean, from the Greeks to the Romans, to the Middle Ages, to the Renaissance, to now, we've all dealt with drainage, right? Water goes downhill, right? I mean, we figured this out before and we can do it again. The cost issue is whatever the will is contractually between the parties. From an engineering standpoint, what concerned me this morning was that only the concerns were being raised and not any of the solutions. And the breakwaters are distinctive, I think you've said that, right? In other words, you can or cannot, that's distinguishable from a canal. If the ask is just whether we should build a canal, we don't have to address the three-hundred million or a hundred million to three-hundred million dollar breakwaters, do we?
You could build the canal without the breakwaters, yes, you could. It hadn't been presented that way, it's been presented as one.
Correct. So now we can narrow the cost between zero, I'm sorry, between forty-one million, which has been presented by a developer, and a possible hundred million if you take the doomsday approach and you need more bridges and you need more X, Y, and Z. In other words, your cost has a floor and a ceiling, Councilman Smith. And I agree that there might be some fog, but contractually, if this developer tells you he can build it for forty-one million, can't you contractually agree that forty-one million will build you a canal? If he says he can do it, if breakwaters are gonna be in the discussion, I agree, the fog is thick, right? If the breakwaters are not in the discussion.
And I said earlier, forty-one point two million, I support it.
Right. And I thought that was the ask, going back to what Barrera, Councilman Barrera said. What is my ask here today? The ask is, as I thought it was presented, was to have a workshop on whether or not that was feasible. And if you haven't asked your financial advisor if that's feasible, I, that's only, that's what you guys do. But to answer your question, Councilwoman Wajardo, we have three-hundred-and-sixty thousand people in our jurisdiction and on our December fourth agenda, which is just tomorrow, we have a, an item to present before Commissioners Court regarding the hydrology and the drainage of our entire county. We're not just as commissioners and judge interested in North Beach. We're interested in drainage regionally, including our entire basin, which runs all the way from West Texas all the way over. Along with your city staff, we've been entertaining the notion of working with our higher educational institutions, Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, for 3D modeling. We've worked with our sort of counterparts at, at the, at the Water Authority and the GLO to understand drainage better. The county is here because we're interested in drainage comprehensively. And we think that this is probably ripe right now to deal with this part of drainage in our county. And so we're willing to bring in an expert that we believe will have an access for funding and for whoever addressed funding, I think that was Councilman Roy. You said, we really haven't discussed anything that you haven't heard already before. And so what I wanna tell you is two things maybe you hadn't heard before. One, I'll just reiterate, on our agenda tomorrow is, is an opportunity to hire a hydrologist to do a comprehensive drainage study assessment. And the second thing is, is on December eighteenth on our agenda, we're going to be hiring a consultant to help us with these mitigation dollars, which would be a vehicle to get us, I think, halfway, possibly halfway through our breakwater, which I think is necessary in general, just understanding tides and understanding what those breakwaters. in general, just understanding tides and understanding what those breakwaters look like, have been presented to you in a potential video, just to get your mind around what a structure might look like with dredge placement material in the water. All it is, is an opportunity to imagine, but it's not, it's not the exact design that would become reality most likely. But you do have a funding source here for those breakwater aisles or possibly a seawall or a bulkhead. That's what this paper represents. And rather than sit here and argue about who's talking down to who, which, forgive me, I'll tell you what I tell my commissioners when maybe that's been said once or twice before from a friend. You'll know when I'm talking down to you. And this is not me talking down to you. You'll know it and you'll feel it. And I'm sorry that you think that, but that's not what I came here to do. In fact, my opening remark was how happy I am that we come and speak frankly to one another. But we do have a lot of stake in economic development. We do have a lot of experience with grants. We have a grant department. The city does not. We wish to partner with you. We wish to go after these dollars for this project. This project, this coastal project, because it's ripe and because our friends in Rockport, they need a breakwater too. And the mayor of Rockport yesterday asked me after the hearing if there might be a potential to work together to fund a multi-jurisdictional breakwater project. Okay? And all these issues that were brought up today are good ones. They're ones that you should consider in your due diligence. But we have considered them. And I think it's a problem, just me personally, if it took you 10 years from 2009 to 2019 to get a TERS done. And I think you're right. You should be very proud that you voted 61 to 1 to help a neighborhood. But the votes are hollow if, if at the moment in time when you reach the crossroads, that you need to put some dollars, put your money where your mouth is, put some skin in the game so you can go chase these dollars. I think that's really important. And that's what's before you, Councilman Barrera, is an opportunity to make the investment to say, we're ready to put forth $40 million. And then allow your design team to get to work so that you can answer the questions that have been posed to you to get it done. But they're all solvable and they all, and you can contractually figure out how to protect yourself. And if you can't, get yourself a new bunch of lawyers because they are supposed to be able to figure out for you how to protect you. If 41 is okay by you and it's okay by the mayor, because he and I talked about it, what his concern is, is your concern. They don't, he does not, at least what you told me, Mayor, is you don't want it to go up, to balloon up because you have too many other issues with roads and parks and wastewater. And I understand that. We didn't come here to argue with you. We came here to, to say, let us, let us carry some of this burden. I'm willing to carry the burden right here and chase these major dollars. And I'd love to visit and work with your staff, but I want to hear how they can get it done. How the $41 million can get us a navigable canal that will be a layer in your cake to get drainage done. But anybody who thinks that your drainage problems is solved by just a canal is kidding themselves. And Rudy, I'm going to give you the, the gold star of the day because the idea that the elevation that you bring up, the 100 homes versus the 600, is, is the most, is the most important piece of this. Elevating this land is critical in order to get the proper drainage. And yet we ask ourselves, how much will it cost? Well, I'll tell you what, it costs less today than it will tomorrow. It'll cost more tomorrow than it will on Thursday. It'll cost more tomorrow on Friday, tomorrow on Friday than it did on Thursday. And so on and so on. And so you can keep debating it and you can keep studying it, you can keep coming up with concerns, but until you make a decision that $41 million is worth drainage on that piece of property that will be flooded in 30 years, completely, then what? This isn't a debate about what the issues are. They're vast, but they are solvable. It's whether or not $41 million is worth beginning this process. I think it is. I'm not an expert in your finances, but I do see what every average citizen sees online, your good rating, your ratio, your, what you have available left, bond. It's just a decision that you're going to make. And all we wanted to do here at the county was to explore with you what your concerns were, but how to address some of these funding sources. And I will tell you, I think it's a gift that we're doing comprehensive drainage study at this time because we can lend the, the consultant experts, we can lend our granting department. We're already working together with Yvette on, on, on flood mitigation comprehensively. We're not here to do anything but to strengthen this alliance. But if you think I'm going to sugarcoat it, for what purpose, I don't know. I mean, it wasn't what I thought, but that's okay. We, we can make the adjustment and we can move on. But the ask is to go forward with a navigable canal as an investment by the city, as a layer for drainage so that you can move forward. That's what I see the ask is. And I wish we had the dollar, I wish we had a, an easement to, to also be a voting member, but we're not. So we're just here to tell you that we think we can be equally as impactful because of the mitigation dollars, which by the way, is just one bucket of money. There's also Restore and Go Mesa that can be leveraged to maximize these. And if you think that I'm talking just crazy stuff, then you need to study, since Yvette knows about Scape, I believe that was a competition design project. They received $60 million from HUD and they had all the same questions that you did, all the same concerns. And you know what, right now, they're building it, this living breakwater. So it can be a done and it can be accomplished. And, and we're grateful that, that we got a chance to be here today. We really are. And I hope, I hope that you will call on us more often so that we can work on these problems together because we can't do it by ourselves and we know that.
I'd like to, if I may interject, and thank you for clarifying, because it, it, you know, I, I did take it in a different way, so I appreciate that. This still goes back to, and I want to address this because again, the workshop is supposed to be about moving forward in partnership. So maybe Mr. Blackard could help us here, but again, we're all wanting to do something and we will do something. But how does this go back to the deadline? Because we can talk all of this all day long.
Well, maybe the deadline can be explained again. Maybe that's-
I'm sorry?
Could they maybe explain the deadline again?
Well, I mean, it's pretty simple. There's a deadline.
Right. But the nature of the deadline is the opportunity zone. It's a federal-
I think we all understand that pretty well, but- Right. But the deadline is the reason we are not able to, I mean, that's, that's, that is the bottom line here. We can't, we're not moving forward because there's a deadline and there's a due diligence that we have. So my question is how, in working together, you know, the, the deadline is there. I mean, this is what we talked about yesterday, Mr. Blackard. How does that change? We have a due diligence. Our city manager has, has let us know in writing and verbally and otherwise, there are things that need to be considered and done before we should, it's his recommendation, before we should move forward. So of course we take his, you know, there's a reason we hired him and we faith in him. So that's where we are. I just want y'all to understand that's where we are. So we've got a deadline, we've got a recommendation. Do you not do your due diligence?
I don't know what due diligence you're looking for. I think-
Let me try to, let me try to address this and wrap it up. Everything we've talked about today is focusing on trying to make something happen. I am kind of intrigued that I've, if we have one more meeting, I'll hit the trifecta. I've been called a liar in two meetings so far. If we have another one, I maybe get to be called a liar on the third time, but it, that, it's kind of intriguing to me. But the issue we've got, and you, and Judge, you said it, is that we need the whole story. Well, let me tell you what my interpretation of the whole story is. We're sitting here looking at potentially somewhere between 750 million and a billion dollars worth of investment imposed upon us by the EPA on a settlement agreement for wastewater. You and I were in Austin multiple times when the legislature imposed caps on our ability to tax to meet our basic needs in our communities, counties and cities. We've got a three and a half percent cap, right? Three and a half cent cap, not percent. Three and a half percent or three and a half cents? Three, three and a half percent. Okay. And county likewise. We don't know and Gil brought this study up and, and I, and very good. And on page 72 of the study, it says in the middle of the page, "All of the following construction costs are considered preliminary and have not undergone any design or architectural planning." So what in this book is shown as a $40 million deal, you and I both know, and we have it all the time, we're going to go out and do a street, just the preliminary numbers say it's going to cost us a million and a half. We go out for bid. It comes back $4 million. At least we had a preliminary number to begin with, based on something. This has not even been subjected to the people that give you those numbers, other than this fellow that reads a lot and makes a presentation. I'm not questioning his credibility. And we've heard this project and, and what the public thinks they're getting, what the public thinks they're getting is this for the 40 something million dollars. This is what the public thinks they're getting through all of their presentations. I have been approached by many, many people. Man, McCombe, they're out here saying you're against this project. I have never said I'm against the project. And let me go on record as saying that. And I may get called a liar again, I don't know. I have never said I've gone against this project. I think it's a great project. I cautioned them when they first started, make sure you protect my milk bottle over there on North Beach. What I am concerned about is the mayor of this city, and I will not offer any apologies whatsoever, I've got to look out for what's going to impact our community. And until we have a cost, and you said you want the whole story, that's part of the transparency. I mean, we've heard numbers to range from anywhere from 40 million to 350 million or 400 million, depending on time you throw everything in. And from the public standpoint, the story I'm getting when they come up and say, why are you against this project? What are you doing? Why don't you guys get out of the way and let the developer do it? The public perception is this mean body of people up here at the city council is standing in the way of a developer that's got a boatload of money and we're prohibiting him from designing and building this project. What they don't understand is that everything that's been posed in this project, other than the private sector investment of the homes and stuff, is coming out of their pocket. And the question to me is, one, how much is it going to cost and who's going to pay for it? And I said, well, you're going to pay for it. I don't know how much it's going to cost. I mean, I've heard numbers that could impact our, they, they want, first of all, they want to do a utility project. I've heard it could impact our utility rates per customer 15 to 40 percent, but we don't know the cost. So I don't know whether it's going to be 15 percent or 40 percent. So until we have those figures known, we can't go ask our financial advisor, what's the best way to structure it? Because we don't know what the target is that we're trying to finance. And I'm with you. I'll, you, I'll drive or you can drive or we'll, wherever we need to go, we'll join hands, go after these grants, any other source of money is fine. But we cannot afford to impact our utility rates 15 to 40 percent in lieu of, we've got this agreed settlement that's coming down the pike from the EPA, we've got a tax cap, three and a half percent on our ad valorem taxes, and we, we've heard it said it's a, it's a blank check, but we don't know what the numbers are. And the, the, the most unfortunate thing of this whole thing is that, and I don't know who his advisor was, and of course, the clock is ticking and I understand the federal regulations, but the deadline that Mr. Frazier is dealing with, the city council, New Haysis County Commissioners Court had nothing to do with the imposition of those deadlines. Not, nuther, nothing.
You're right.
Those are federal regulations. Now whoever was advising him as to what to invest the money in and how quickly you could get a project up to life, that's on the advisor's table, not yours and not mine. We've got to do, and you've got three former city councilmen sitting there up here now trying to commit us to something on a blank check. I will guarantee you, Carolyn Vaughn would have never supported authorizing a blank check.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chesney, I've heard him every time, even at council and on the Commissioners Court, say, I'm not going to vote for a tax increase. We go back to the effective tax rate, right? Except for this last year, maybe was the difference. Every time you go back to the effective tax rate because you don't want to burden the taxpayers. We've got to know what kind of impact we're going to have on the taxpayers. And we don't know that yet. It's not that we're against the project, but we really can't make a legitimate, honest, transparent, whole story documented presentation to the community until we know these facts and costs. And Frazier is, I mean, he is the epitome of the American dream.
Yeah.
And I've just met him a very short time. He's a great guy. And the last thing I want him to do is lose money. But I cannot put the taxpayers, in my play, in my situation, in the City Corpus Christi, in Yoursis County Judge, this is a decision you done made, but I cannot vote to something that I know, going in with a blindfold on, that's going to impact them 15 to 40 percent on their utility rate. I just can't do it. That's just-
I don't know where that, I don't understand your 15 to 40. I do understand you don't have a fixed stormwater rate. I do understand you have an EPA issue. I do understand you have a billion dollar wastewater situation. What I, what I also know is that the ask is for 41 point something a million. I think what happens is we're, we're confusing one for another. I think if you take the breakwater islands away, that is what's making the cost very exorbitant. It's real important that those are different-
And maybe you, you and I could, probably you and I could work together pretty well. If our goal is to solve the drainage problem-
Mm-hmm. That's my goal.
Then everybody leave and you and me get together and we can come up with somebody to, it may not be a canal.
Right.
It may not be a ditch, but we've solved the drainage problem. But that's not what the people think they're getting. So, but we can't make that decision-
Here's what I want the taxpayers to understand-
Or if we need to make that decision, we need some time and it can't be done by Tuesday.
I just want to address the revenue caps because that's an excellent point. And I am 100% convinced that people still don't understand the revenue caps.
Well, it's going to be devastating at times.
It will, but the only way to beat the revenue caps, you know, there's one way you beat it all. You know how you do it? It's called new growth. There's only one way, and I predict at the county, we're going to do it, to beat revenue caps. New growth is not a part of your revenue caps. Do you understand that? You know that? Because that's, that's the most exciting part. There's always a way to beat the system, right? And the way to beat revenue caps is to actually have new growth. So we have one, you're right, we were dealt a tough, tough hand, but the way to circumvent that tough hand is to create new growth, which is why I'm just hell bent on creating economic development for us because I know we're going to live or die by it. And so for me, the ask is the $40 million for drainage. If we don't make that investment as a community, we're never going to get North Beach up and running. I agree with you. I think a canal, based on what I've heard Mr. Urban say, is a, is a viable remedy. There are other remedies, but it's the most viable because it presents flexibility to create economic development. But I agree with you, if drainage is our only problem, then there's probably two or three ways to create better drainage over there. But the one that gives tentacles to the other areas that we need, there's only one way your taxpayers will be less burdened in getting your rates lower as possible. And that's if you create a tax base that's grand. And the only way to do that is to find infrastructure that will promote it, which is why the TERS to me was so important because it was the economic tool that would give us a potential growth.
And we, and we've been able to do that.
And we did it.
And they've start, they've worked on it and weren't able to get it done. We got it done. And they started it and we're glad to carry it across the finish line.
You're right. The unfair thing that we just didn't tell everybody is that it's a Texas two-step. It only means something if they can develop on land that's not going to flood- It only means something if they can develop on land that's not gonna flood on them. Because at some point, that's gonna be a major consideration for them doing business.
And Mayor, can I just respond to what you said? I am not, because you, you called me by name, so I wanna respond. I was really gonna shut up for the rest of the meeting. But I am not trying to ask you for a blank check. That is not what I thought the ask was, as Councilman Vera said. I thought we came in here to discuss the ask of forty-one million dollars. Councilman Smith has said he supports that. So my question is, so be clear, I am not asking for you to pre, a blank check. I completely understand that you have to have some limitation. My question would be, couldn't the council make it, make it a forty-one million dollar yes or no vote? And put that in contractual language with the developer, since the developer has said so clearly that that's what he believes it would do? I, I agree with Councilman Smith. I, I wouldn't want you to set a hundred, because throwing out this fifty, sixty, a hundred mil, that's confusing to everybody. The ask today, I thought, was forty-one million. And that's what I thought we were talking about today. And so, and I wanted to say something too, but in case my comments were unclear. Your job stinks. I don't, I wouldn't wanna be up there anymore. I sat there for seven and a half years, and I would never come up here and try to harangue you, or say that y'all have done anything. Y'all have done great work on the TERS. You've done great work with the county on Parker Pool. We're working on County Road Thirty-three together. I think the relationship between the city and the county is great. So if my comments were mistaken, as anything towards talking down or trying to harangue, that was not the intent. My intent was just to say, "Look, I would have preferred two sides of the coin. I would have preferred a little more dialogue," and I think Councilman Roy said it the best. No offense, but I'm not sure where we got today. But the ask I thought was forty-one million. So unless that ask is changed, that's still the ask today. So I, maybe that's the way the council could address it.
Let me just share this and that.
So I'm not looking for a blank check. That's all I'm saying.
We're not taking a vote, we're not doing anything. But let me, since you've addressed that issue, and he's supported it. Let me tell you something. We had a meeting with Mr. Blacker, and Carolyn Vaughn, she referred to that meeting, referred to you had a tape recording of what I said, right? Didn't you make that statement just a minute ago? You got a recording of it?
Yeah, I've got a, a.
A tape recording. Which was done unknownst to the people in the meeting, but Mr. Blacker historically records every meeting he goes to, private or public. So, anyway, he's got a recording of this. And I, it may prove out pretty good. I don't think I remember saying anything I shouldn't have, but I made an offer in that meeting, because I was concerned. I said, "You're saying everything you've got in this video can be done for the forty-one, for forty-two million dollars." Yep. I said, "Everything you can do, the bird, the islands, the canals, and all this," yeah, we can do it. I made him an offer. I said, "I'll be willing to go to the council." The TERS is, I think the number is forty-one point two million dollars is the projected, until we got this adjustment today, somewhere around there, another four or five million dollars, right? Who's got the numbers on the TERS?
Yeah, that's correct, man.
Forty-one point two million. I said, "I'll recommend to the council that we lease all of the city property," because all this, all this canal is gonna be on public property, "that we'd lease it to you, not for a dollar a year, a dollar for the twenty years. The TERS is gonna generate forty-one point two million dollars, excluding the seven million dollars we've already commit, seven or eight? Seven point eight million dollars we've already committed to Mr. Frazier on the hotel. So that would give us thirty-one or some, whatever that number is. And you go out and do it for forty-two, for forty-one million dollars." And their response was, "Well, I don't have that money, but I, I can go borrow it." And then about a week later, we get a, a, a response answer to it. So my, the offer was on the table. And then we would, we would contract with Global, there, because they're the developer.
You would do what? I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Lease it to them, lease the property for a dollar a year, dollar for twenty years. Guarantee them the forty-one million dollars generated by the TERS over the twenty years. And then they could take the project and go with it. They'd have, they, they wouldn't have to deal with the city staff, because they, they voiced concerns many times, they don't have a lot of confidence in the city staff. They wouldn't have to deal with them. Private sector can do things fifteen to twenty percent, thirty percent cheaper than government projects. I think we've all seen that happen. And then, maybe not a week, ma, a few days later, we get a response back that they did, they wouldn't accept my suggestion that I make that to the city council.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to defer to Mr. Blacker. I don't know exactly.
But anyway, I'm just telling you that. We, we've gone down that path. We've gone down that path.
I, I don't expect you to do a blank check. So I wanna make that clear for the record. Not what I asked.
All right, well, it's almost twelve o'clock.
My light has been on, and I've been ignored. I have to clarify something. Here's what was said. So you're completely satisfied with the forty-one point two million dollars again, which has been promoted to the public. You can get into the canal. And Sinoni says, "That includes and cut out, right in some location in the Bay of the Jettie." Jeff says, "I mean, I would like to keep," well, I'm, I read the wrong thing. Says, "It's a forty-two million, one, include those islands." And Jeff said, "No, no. The plan on the islands is we have to get the permit." He never, ever, ever has said, Joe, that the islands and the canal would cost forty-two million dollars. He never said that. Never. I've never heard him put those together, not one time. And you're right, I wouldn't write a check for forty, a blank check for forty-two million dollars, or whatever. I would for the forty-two million, because I believe that he can do it. He told y'all that. But a blank check, no. I don't think anybody on this council would, or the commissioners' court. But the point is, there were three options. You guys came to him and asked him if he would do it, because I really don't believe you thought he would. Because I don't think y'all think it's gonna cost forty-two, you think it's more. But that's the information we got from Urban. So there's three options. Either the city does it, he does it, or you do nothing. And then you're probably gonna get sued, because it's been said, we know we have a drainage problem. We know it's a safety problem with the chief and police and the fire. So I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna call you a liar, but I'm just saying what you said is inaccurate. So you can take that any way you want to. But it's gotta stop, and the reason he does all of this, and has to tape it, and write it down, is for this very reason. Things are said that aren't true.
I just wanna say that I, obviously, we're drawing to a close here. And, you know, I always think that anytime people get together, we learn something. I never think any moment is wasted, to be honest with you. Life's too precious for me to waste any time at all, and this has been good, even though maybe it doesn't feel good. And it didn't feel good to me in the beginning, because of all the reasons we've already, quite frankly, I felt the consensus was the same. So I'm not gonna belabor that point. But, but having said that, moving forward, let us continue this dialogue. Don't let it stop, because we have work to do with this project. And the idea that we all are stewards of dollars is, I mean, that's, that's a given, guys. It's a given. And it's a given that we all want to see our area grow and prosper. And I just feel like we have an honest difference of opinion on our, what our fears are. My fear is that inaction will lead to nothingness. Like I've seen for so often, and, and that's, we all have fears, right? And your fear is that you will burden your, your city, your government in a way that would be harmful to the taxpayer. I wanna say that I respect that concern and that fear. And I respect the idea that, that we are worried about nothing happening. And the timeline that's imposed is probably not a bad one. Because I'm gonna tell you something. You're not gonna get any of these questions really answered until you authorize a project, like a drainage project, to go forward. And then I promise you, if your own internal engineers can't, won't tell you along the way that it's not gonna work, then the federal or the state agencies will tell you along the way. And if you have good lawyers to pin it and paper it, it will protect you. And that's where I think there is some disagreement between what I'm thinking, because it sounds like the forty-one million is okay. I didn't come here to ask for anything more than, hey, why do you, tell me why you think the forty-one million dollar navigable canal is a bad investment? That's really what I wanted to hear from staff. Is why is that not a good idea? And then why is it a good idea, conversely, to do it now rather than later? And so I think we should continue the dialogue, Mayor. That's all.
All right, we will. Uh, we don't have, well, if you be very quickly, since the county's got a public comment period, the city doesn't.
I'm Deborah Pope, I'm a property owner.
But this, this will be all we have. We've
I'll try to make it fast.
Quickly.
My name is Deborah Pope. I'm a property owner on North Beach, and I also lived in the McKinney area for twenty years. I know Jeff's work. He's a man of vision, integrity. Um, he's a Christian. He's very well-loved in the McKinney area. He took a piece of dirt in McKinney and turned it into Master Plan Community Gorgeous Adriatica that I go to on a weekly basis. There's single-family dwellings, there's multi-home, multifamily dwellings, there's shops, there's restaurants. Jeff is a mover and a shaker. When he comes in, he does it like it should be done. And when I bought property on North Beach, I really didn't know. I'm almost embarrassed at this point to say I live on North Beach. People, when I tell people I live on North Beach, they say, "Why would you buy a piece of property there over in that dump?" Well, I can just say that as a, as a resident there, I really want the canal. I'm also a big proponent for economic development. If we want Corpus Christi to be the shining star of tourism, and of growth, and bringing in new, new businesses and new companies, let's go forward with the canal. If we wanna keep North Beach as a dump that people are ashamed to say they own property there, then don't do anything. You can either do a ditch that won't help anybody with any of the economic development, the beautification of it, or you can do the canal and go forward with economic growth, quality of life that's gonna bring in new people and new business.
All right, thank you very much.
And then just Dennis Patel signed up, according to Tyner.
Dennis Patel, SCCB HLC. I'm involved with the hotel industry in Corpus Christi. And the, the city council has an amazing opportunity in front of you right now. And I know that, like, um, this deadline is sort of like a deadline that a developer has, but I think it should be given substantial consideration. Because right now, you have an opportunity to get five birds, like many, many birds knocked out with one infrastructure project. If we don't use this workshop productively today to come to a conclusion if that forty-two million will be voted on on December tenth, then basically what's happening is that you're just gonna get an infrastructure project somewhere down the road, and you're gonna lose the, the boost in the tourism, you're gonna lose the boost in the development, you're gonna lose the boost in the economic activity, and basically all you get is just a drainage solution. Right now, if you vote on or before December tenth to kinda dedicate that forty million dollars to a canal, you have a opportunity that most city councils and most cities would really, really be pushing for. From, from a logical perspective, if you see what this canal can do, it'll take the tourism industry in Corpus Christi to another level. And I see, year after year, because I study the hotel occupancy taxes. On North Beach, the zip code for seven eight four oh two, year after year, the hotel occupancy taxes are increasing. And I know Jeff Blacker is doing like very substantial and prestigious developments. But, and so is Lynn Frazier. But there are other developers as well that are lined up and are hoping that the city will dedicate forty-two million dollars prior to December tenth. Because if that deadline passes and the city doesn't do anything, then basically all this work that we've been doing with the TERS, this is like, kinda like the last phase in completing all of that. And it'll pretty much have gone to waste. You know, like, not a hundred percent of it will go to waste, but like, all the, all the movement and the energy that's behind this, if the developers leave, then who else is gonna build? From a perspective that if the city can't invest forty-two million into itself, then why should any of the developers invest either? And on North Beach is probably the largest tourist revenue generation that the city has because of the aquarium, because of the Lexington, because of the hotels. And I know as a member of the hotel community in Corpus Christi, not just on North Beach, but there are lots of other developers, hotel developers, that are hoping that this project will go through. And I feel like, yeah, because it's IRS deadline and, uh, federal taxes, opportunity zones and stuff like that. But that's basically the opportunity that's here. If you don't capitalize on that, then basically that, the drainage solution that you come up with is only a drainage solution, and you lose the tourism, you lose the economic development, and things like that. And, uh, one other thing is that, like, I sort of know what it's like to sit in that chair. I was in a, um, executive board position in a organization in my university. And ten years ago, we had to make a decision whether we wanna reinvest into our organization. It was a big, it was actually a big dev, uh, investment that we had to make. And I didn't even get to see it play out. But ten years, looking back, I can see that, yeah, we made that right decision, because the next E-Board that came after us, they got all the benefits, and we got to see that. And I feel like that's really, really important. I think what, one of the first productive things that happened in this meeting, I think, was Councilman Greg's comments about cost. Because I think what it comes down to is that this is an investment, and cost is a big thing. But you have so many resources in this room right now that can discuss the cost. You can come to a conclusion to see how much these developments would cost in general. And I feel like we wasted a lot of time in this workshop just arguing, rather than making constructive moves on moving forward. Because this was almost the last meeting, prior to the December tenth meeting, that we were all hoping that the city council would make a vote on that forty-two million for the development. And right now, it seems like we almost didn't get anything done. The economic development, like, research that, uh, somebody presented, no offense, but like, that almost seemed like a hit piece to the whole project. Like, I'm not sure who Capital Markets is, but like, I, I don't think that was like, that's like saying, "Oh, if you go to the beach, there's a million reasons how you could get injured. You could get eaten by a shark, or you could drown," or something like that. But what about all the reasons that, like, "Oh, you could have fun at the beach," and all that type of stuff? You know, like, if you understand that analogy, but, um.
All right, can, can I wrap it up if you could, please?
I will, I will. Um, but yeah, this, the city needs a positive vision. I feel like there's a lot of negativity in the presentation. And if the city commits to spending that forty-two million on December tenth for the canal, I feel like it would spur so much more development than you guys even think, just from one developer. There's many, many developers that are lined up, not just one. It's just that Jeff has the most prestigious development that gets the most attention. But there are other developments as well that are hoping that the city council votes a yes on December tenth to dedicating forty-two million for the canal.
All right, thank you. Ms. Sinoni, you got any following comments?
Uh, just one, actually, just one comment on the, um, the proposal that you did make, that we made to Jeff Blacker, of the forty-one point two million. His response back would cost more than that. He said he would do it for forty-one, but the city would have to pay for all the design. So that's about four million. And then we'd have to pay for, uh, engineering, uh, the Phase One, Phase Two environmental assessment. And we'd have to buy all the necessary permits, so that raises the price tag. Um, and then, at the end of the term, the city would have to buy back the whole canal. So assuming it's forty million to build, it would cost us eighty million at that point. So we have offered a, a price tag of forty-one million, but the, the response back was it's gonna cost more than that. So we don't have a firm, we still don't have a good number for forty-one million.
All right.
Is it possible that we could go to have that type of a conversation? I mean, it's kinda hard at the end of a workshop to have that kind of comment made without having, in fairness, the other person on the side address it with some of the nuances.
We've met with him.
We, we've met with him and negotiated. I mean, we can continue talking, but I think the workshop, we're done here.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I'm reading the, the document you gave us. This is your response?
That's fine. Yes, that, that's not the intent of the document, um, to, to buy back the canal. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard.
Well, it's in your document. You, you would want us to buy it back at the term for the fair market.
No.
You wrote it, Jeff, sorry. It's, it's right here, I mean. "The city shall pay to the developer the then fair market value of such improvements, if so conveyed."
Of, of the improvements on the leased property.
Right, the canal. Well, the, the leased property being the canal.
If we build structures on the end, then you pay me for it, or you extend the lease. So because the term was such a short term, if I go build, you know, millions, a million-dollar structure on the end, at the end of the lease term, you can either extend my lease, or you could
We need to discuss it, but there's always, there's such vagueness in this stuff that we could go on forever. So make a
Well, certainly.
Make your comment.
Certainly you can put it out there, and then I just explain it. I just want to make sure.
Well, it says for the leased property for a dollar, right? So that is the canal area.
Correct, that was your, that was your offer.
Right, but we would buy it back for the fair market value of the canal. The property we're leasing is where the canal would go, is it not? And that's what we, okay, I'm not showing you.
No, that was never the intent of the document. It was the property that's out at the end.
We're not leasing that, we're leasing you the center part, so you can build the canal.
Well, if there wasn't a meeting of the minds, there wasn't a meeting of the minds. That's why lawyers should be involved with the contractual discussion.
That's a triple today.
And not people who are not attorneys, because when you have that type of interpretation, the best evidence is the witness. And if he's telling you that was not the intent, that was not the intent.
Take that part out, then. The point is, my point is, the forty-one point two million, that was the number we offered to the developer. He came back with saying it's going to cost us more. We would have to pay for all the engineering, we'd have to pay for all the permitting, and we'd have to pay for the studies that would take place, and have all our development services fees waived, so already it's more than forty-one million.
Well, is that negotiable, Jeff?
Yes, and also, unless you already have the Phase One and Phase Two studies, which you should have done on the railroad, you.
We don't have them, is the point. Yeah, so it's going to pass.
All right, well, we're not going to negotiate the contract here, but any, the other comment. All right, well, thank you both and all for coming, and we appreciate it. Meeting adjourned. And you want to adjourn your Commissioners' Court?
Say that again.